Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting. Roll call.
Tavala.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Lou.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Van Waring.
Here.
Security.
Good evening. My name is Bob Conz and I represent the Safety and Security Team for District 49. As part of our intent to host our board meetings in an orderly manner, consistent with our culture, cultural values of care and respect, we expect all audience members and board members to comply with basic decorum. That means we do not permit audience members to shout out over board members or other speakers, including those speaking in open forum. If it becomes necessary, the board chair may place the meeting in recess to address disruptive behavior. Individuals who do not comply with basic courtesy may be directed to leave the premises and may be subject to further action, including exclusion from district events, civil penalties, or formal charges. In addition, all participants in tonight's meeting are being recorded by audio and video technology. Thank you for attending and thank you for helping us maintain productive and orderly conduct at this meeting.
As always, District 49 is proud to pledge allegiance to the flag. Please stand with me. Before we get to approval of agenda, I have a point of privilege. If you guys can hit the video. We have a video that will be shown in this building, but not livestreamed. And we'll show you where you can get the video on livestream due to copyright law possibilities. With Lori, who was with me, attending that class at Falcon Middle School. May I have a motion for approval of agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Any further discussion? Vote, please.
Tavala.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Lou.
Thompson.
Aye.
Van Waring.
Aye.
Motion passes. A couple people signed up for public comment, so I am going to read our dissertation. If I can find it. We appreciate and welcome comments from our stakeholders as part of District 49's open forum. Please remain in your seats until called to the podium by the Board of Education Chair. Once called upon, please approach the podium, state your name and relationship to the district before beginning. Please speak into the microphone. Written statements may be left in the basket by the podium. And I'll call all others to be in the at bat box. We ask that you not address anyone in the audience and that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner. To fulfill our values of trust and respect, we decline to create a forum for attacks or criticism against specific staff members, students, or other stakeholders. Therefore, with the exception of members of the board or the chief officer, personal complaints against individuals connected with the school system are prohibited in this forum. Follow-up action items may be assigned to the chief executive officer. In accordance with board policy, BEDH, open forum participation is limited to two minutes per person. It is the practice of the Board of Education to withhold any comment or direction to the chief officers until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our stakeholder grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our District 49 community and guides the stakeholder through the correct people and processes to help resolve their concern, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board of Education. We encourage you to utilize this process if warranted, as many have successfully resolved their concerns this way. Thank you for participating in our open forums. And as a disclaimer, the views and opinions expressed in public forum are those of the commentators and do not necessarily represent official policy or positions of District 49 or the Board of Education. So, at this point, may I have Dr. Lindsay Lee to the podium, Deb Schmidt to the, at the batter's box in the back, and John Gustafson as well.
Sorry.
State your name, relationship to the district, and then we'll start the two-minute clock.
I'm Dr. Lindsay Lee. I'm a D-49 parent, member of the Horizon and Springs Ranch Saks, member of the DAC, and a D-49 taxpayer, and Vice President of Neighbors for Education. I wanted to speak tonight on the topic of redistricting. I've been present for all the public discussions on this matter and would like to urge the board not to overcomplicate this decision. Based on the information shared by Mr. Hiltz and the district's attorneys, unlike many other areas of governance, this appears to be a straightforward matter of law and math. I was particularly appreciative that Mr. Hiltz walked everyone through how the math was calculated to comply with the law during the annual planning summit. I don't envy the staff members who were responsible for developing and implementing such a sound process so that all viable alternatives could be explored. I don't understand why the board felt compelled to gather community input on this matter as it's the board's responsibility to simply determine what map is most compliant with the law and move forward in that direction if it wants to avoid legal challenges. The results revealed that many of the respondents were confused and generally uninformed about the issue entirely and believed this process would ultimately force their kids to move schools. Although I responded to the community input survey the district distributed, I did so only to emphasize the need to follow the law and make your decision accordingly. I stand here today to reiterate that point. No matter the decision you make tonight, as our district grows, we'll become increasingly non-compliant day by day. If you choose anything other than the most compliant map, you'll be setting the district on a course to become non-compliant even more quickly. Some questions I leave you with as you contemplate your votes. Have you consulted the attorneys regarding the implications for choosing anything other than the most compliant map? How does the district plan to avoid costly litigation if you choose anything but the most compliant map? What possible defense could you offer? It's my hope that you'll make the fiscally responsible decision and avoid knowingly putting the district in a risky and potentially costly position with your votes tonight. And Ivy Lou still needs to resign.
Thank you. Deb Schmidt.
Good evening. I'm Deb Schmidt. I'm a grandmother of almost six now in the D-49 district. Tonight, I'm going to share with you an excerpt from the Level Five Leader in Me SEL Activity Book, page 38, which outlines, outlines a win-win compromise. The leader in me says, "Thinking win-win takes confidence, courage, and consideration." You need to be confident in your beliefs. You need to have the courage to stand up for those beliefs, and you need to have consideration for other people's beliefs. This lesson is part of one of the trusted programs that this board and administration have grasped onto so tightly that you are failing to see that you aren't even practicing what you are preaching. Have any of you given proper consideration to what parents, grandparents, taxpayers, and all others have so openly shared with you? These people have not come to speak just to waste everybody's time. These people have all come here to speak to you with a strong confidence in their beliefs and the courage to stand up for those beliefs. And you give them zero consideration. Instead, you choose to minimize them and suppress their free speech rights with ridiculous policies. You blow right past every valid concern they have about the trusted materials that you all approved. Now, tonight, redrawing district lines is before you. We all know there is room for considering different opinions, different options, different proposals. Will you have the confidence and courage to consider other proposals? Or will you again choose audacity itself? Thank you.
John?
My name is John Gustafson. I'm a community member. What is it, my friends, that is the million-dollar question? I'll tell you, it's why. Why is it that we so desperately need SEL? Or better yet, for what? What is it that is socially and emotionally destroying people on an industrial scale? Our people, all people? What is destroying families, destroying communities, destroying the spirits of so many of our children? Why is there so much more despair? So much more addiction? So much more need for pharmaceutical stabilization of our young people and ourselves? Why is there so much more violence, so much more suicide? And why, my friends, is no one allowed to ask why? Why do we condescend and besmirch in private the few who dare to ask why? Why do we belittle and demean them? Why do we gerrymander them out of the conversation? Is it greed? Is it avarice? Is it fear? What do so many of us stand to gain on the back end, behind closed doors, that would keep us from asking why and having the courage to seek out the truth? How could we be so callous, so craven? Thank God for Ivy Lou. Thank God that people like Ivy have the stones to stand up and seek out the truth. Thank God because so many of us only seem to have pebbles. One day, we will all meet our Creator and we'll all have to answer for what we've done to our children, what we allowed to happen. And on that day, my friends, I'll thank God that I stood with Ivy Lou.
We're now on to our action items. Excuse me? I have, the names I called are the only ones on this list. It's live, so as they sign up, it shows up here. Okay, so I have a head shake in the far back. I don't see a name here. How many? You may not press save or submit, whatever the thing is, but go ahead. Sabrina.
My name is Sabrina Ballister. I am a taxpayer stakeholder of this district. And I am here tonight regarding the redistricting. And I've looked at the four options that have been presented, the four different proposals for redistricting. And just for myself, looking at the one that the board and executive members here are desiring to have be the one, to me, that doesn't quite fit the definition in the statute of compact. Is, is, if, the way it's shaped and coming down does, to me, not define as compact, which is defined as neatly packed, closely, dense, compressed. And that first proposal is showing a very, like, a long area and a hook at the bottom. And that's, to me, does not meet the criteria of being compact. It does contiguous, but not compact. So I'm just concerned if that's really meeting the statute for the, for the state for redistricting. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll move to the action items.
I move to approve the BOE meeting dates for 2023 through 2025 and the proposed dates for 2024 through 2025. Second.
Do we have any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, I have a question, actually. Um, when we, when approving the dates, have we taken into account why we have Wednesday meetings versus and Thursday meetings? And instead of having the same night for both the work session and the, so it's on the same day, like, day of the week?
And the answer to that is probably not. In the 10 years I've been involved with the school district, uh, no one's ever asked that question. It's always been this way. Wednesdays for work sessions slash now special meetings, and Thursdays for the regular, second Thursday of every month for regular meetings. So, no one's actually ever asked that question as long as I am aware of. And, uh, he's been here longer and he says he doesn't know either, so.
Is that something that we can take into consideration? I know that some people, um, sometimes, especially teachers, people who have commitments on certain days of the week, it might make it a lot easier if it was Thursday, Thursday, versus having to switch on and off, on and off, on and off, especially for tutoring kids after school, um, being able to attend board meetings, um, having church on Wednesday nights. I think it's something we need to consider before we vote on this particular. Yeah.
And that's always up to the board to decide. I don't know why we do what we do. It's just that we've had that. If you, if you, you know, people are going to have conflicts on Thursday, are the people going to have conflicts on Wednesday? Doesn't matter to me. I'd actually prefer board meetings to be during the day. Myself, but that can't, no one, not everyone can make that either. Yes, sir?
For what it's worth, Tammy Lynn, I actually personally agree. I find that to be more convenient. The reason, I think in particular, that we did this was, quite honestly, this is a, a traditional district. A lot of people have Wednesday or Thursday church nights. And to avoid having one or the other be always conflicted, that was part of the decision process. Or at least, some people have Thursday night, you know, sort of Bible study, and some people have Wednesday. And that way, you don't take up two in a month. That was honestly the reason.
I know, it's just, um, not just me, but for certain teachers, et cetera, for tutoring kids after school, having to change every other, other week with my tutoring students because of board meetings is challenging personally for me. Not that we have to change this because of my schedule. I just wanted to bring that up.
We also, I'm sorry, John, we also have a statutory obligation to, to define this. We have to take a vote to do this annually. I'm not sure, because I haven't been asked to look if we can delay it a bit. But I do know that we do need to take this action going into the next year to give that certainty. So we're obligated to take this vote. Perhaps not tonight.
Proper decorum, you gotta wait to be recognized. Are the board members?
For what it's worth, I don't have a problem with it being a consistent date either. I, I've always, it's always been this way since I've been on the board for the last four years, so. I've never seen it any different, but I, I don't have a problem with it changing. I just don't know which way you want it to change. And I don't know how much community input we would need to solicit to do that and how long of a delay to the process it would potentially create if we did that. But I, I personally don't have a problem with it being a consistent thing.
I.
So, so Wednesday meetings tend to be not well-attended, but that might be due to the fact that they're long, boring work sessions. But now that they're being switched to special meetings, maybe it is a good idea to put on the same network. We can always make a motion to vote that way and then see what kind of input we get. So, yeah, I, I, the Thursday-Wednesday thing is, is very hard to plan around. So, yeah, let, let's, let's go ahead and make a motion. Can we make a motion? I move that we.
No, you, uh, that's out of order where we are discussing a motion that has been seconded. That's the only motion to discuss right at this moment. What I would suggest, and something that within the first three months of my being on the board a little over seven and a half years ago, was we vote the schedule and then we can discuss with stakeholders what days and times work better. Because we have staff that are stakeholders and we have community members that are stakeholders. That's going to take a little bit more than just dictating today. So, let's vote on the current motion and then let's look into, talk to the DAC, talk to, uh, you know, the various parent groups and community groups and staff groups as to whether the current schedule works, whether Wednesday-Wednesday works, whether Thursday-Thursday works. Does, would that help?
I think it'd be important to get that feedback because it's important that people are able to attend board meetings.
So we can vote on this, hopefully pass it, but then direct the administration to conduct surveys of the staff and surveys of the community using our normal social media, whatever it is we use for those surveys, to then ask what are the best days? What are the most attended days? Okay?
Is there a certain time? Sorry.
Uh, I actually was about to say Lori, so she had her hand up for us.
So if we should approve these dates, that doesn't mean we can't change them if based on community input, it works better to have a more consistent plan?
Correct.
Mr. Graham?
Uh, Mr. Miller.
So, I haven't had a chance yet to refer to the statute, but here's my confidence. We have to establish the regular meeting schedule and publish that in advance. And I would, so I would suggest that you, depending on how you want to vote, that if this motion passes, that you could, after doing a set of surveys and other review, you could change the work session dates, but those regular meetings, the Thursdays, would stay in stone. But there could be some prospect of adjusting the others down the road.
Well, do, do we need to amend the motion then, or?
Just out of curiosity, why is it, can we not amend one day of the week or the other day of the week within, say, a month's time?
I, I actually don't know if there's a deadline for when we have to do that. I actually don't know if there's a deadline for when we have to do that going into the next year. What I'm suggesting, John, is that you could take this vote, and then you could take a different, you could vote later on whether to change the work session slash special meeting dates for next year, and bring them into line with the Thursdays or what have you.
Rick? Oh, I'm sorry, Jamie Lynn had her hand up after Laurie. Director DiBalla?
Brett answered my question.
Mr. Van Weeran?
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, we had some discussion at one point about moving our own meeting times up to get these done earlier in the day, and we discovered that that was gonna cause problems for people for other reasons. So I do think getting community input for anything we're gonna change is an important piece of doing this. But I can't, I can't offhand think of a reason why it can't be changed to a consistent time.
And I would change community input to stakeholder inputs, because there's different stakeholders that would be involved in this. So we have our student board of representatives here. You got any comments on when to have board meetings?
Preferably not when I'm in school.
Okay. All right, so one more. Director Lou?
I move to amend the motion.
You actually are allowed to amend motions.
Yeah, you can amend. I move to amend the motion in front of us to move it forward to the next meeting with the intention of collecting input from stakeholders in between.
I would say that you can't move to move it to another date. You can table the motion, or there's, on your sheet, there's another word for it as well.
I move to table this motion until the following meeting, so we can collect input from the stakeholders in the meantime.
Second.
There is a, okay, and so there's been a second. March 9th, does that give the district enough time to reach appropriate numbers of stakeholders from staff and community members? We're all looking at Mr. Nancaro, so let me put my glasses on. And is that not enough time, or maybe we hold off till the March meeting?
Since I've heard my name, I will come up. David Nancaro, Director of Communications. It's not that it couldn't happen, but that would be significantly rushed compared to a lot of other feedback processes that we conduct to try to get this done between tonight and the following meeting. I mean, it really wouldn't give more than a few days to collect feedback, which, from what I'm hearing, sounds like a pretty important discussion. So all that to say is, I would say that that feels rushed from a previous strategic deployment of feedback.
President Graham? Yeah, just trying to figure out how much time would you need to do what they're asking? And then I will call you. Would a month be more proper?
I mean, I would, it would make sense to me, again, I'm not trying to direct it.
No, 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 I just, because you're guys are gonna put out the surveys.
Yeah.
Would the second meeting in March be more appropriate?
Um, I think that we could. Yeah, I mean, I think we could definitely have a good subset of responses from the stakeholders next month.
Gotcha. Okay, well, we'll decide what day.
So I withdraw my amendment. No?
No, just hold on.
Okay.
Yeah, John, the best course of action might be to do this, as Director Lou was saying. Withdraw her amendment, pass this as it is, because the board meetings will be Thursday night. What you're doing is you're making a decision about whether or not Wednesday night comes in alignment with Thursday night for work sessions or special meetings. So what you can do is you could pass this, and then you can leave sufficient time for research to see if you wanna move the work sessions or special meetings. So you would be able to take the action, have it on record, and have the planning. And Thursdays wouldn't change, so you would have at least 50% of that be consistent. And then you would, then you would come back and do your study, and then you could probably get that changed before, in June or something like that.
Okay, I do have a question for Director DiBalla. Is that what he just said in line with what you're kinda, you were, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna call on Director Van Weeran.
I actually like what Lou said. I know that Wednesday nights are big nights for families that have kids in church activities. Wednesday night has been historically very busy for that. So leaving the regular meetings on Thursdays, as this is written, I think makes a lot of sense. And then the question, then we've got, we've got leisure time a little bit. We don't need to rush Mr. Nancaro into coming out with a survey tomorrow to figure it out.
Okay, so.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. And. Okay, so I just kinda was notified that one reason why we did stagger was to make sure that people can make at least one meeting a month. They can either make it Wednesdays, or they can make it Thursdays, but we'll consider that later. The motion to table has been removed. And just for our edification, the proper motion, I misled Ivy, but the proper motion is postponed definitely, which means to a next meeting. Tabling means to discuss later in the same meeting. Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on the original motion.
DiBalla?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Weeran?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now, does someone wanna make a consensus to the, for us to agree on to task the administration to conduct a survey of stakeholders as to what days, whether work sessions should move to Thursdays, work sessions and special meetings move to Thursdays, or keep them on Wednesdays?
Yes.
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 Yes, unanimous. So directed. You gotta say it on the mic.
Administration takes that answer, and we'll come back with an answer.
Point of information, how do I bring on the table the method of surveys? Because I, I, and speaking with constituents, questioned the way some of the surveys are done, who we are talking to. At this point, based on the people that I have met who are on SACS, either nobody comes, or a couple of people come. So I don't know if SACS, maybe DAC, but not SACS, are the best way to get the most representative?
Director Lou? If I may, just a point of order, the best time to discuss the surveys would be other business later in today's meeting.
I'll bring it up in.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so that motion on the calendar passes, 5.2. Annual strategic objectives.
I move to adopt the four strategic objectives as presented and discussed at the annual planning summit. Are you second?
I have a motion that was seconded. It's to adopt the four strategic objectives as presented. Any further discussion? Director DiBalla?
Okay, so I could have missed this since I was, I left a little early from the strategic planning summit. But I believe that these were four suggestions, and that we hadn't really been able to discuss thoroughly these four that are on the, that are presented tonight in order to take action. I don't believe we've had really good discussion on this. Again, I could have missed that in the last 30 minutes. But I wanted to, to be able to discuss this more. So I would actually propose that we, not table, what's the word that you just said?
Postpone definitely.
Postpone indefinitely.
Not indefinitely, definitely.
That's what I meant. I postponed definitely, so that we can have better discussion of this item.
Any further directors? Director Lou?
Where's academics? We're an education system. Where's academics? Math is good. Finally, we're emphasizing math, which is awesome, turning on some engineers here and there. But where's academics? That should be the first thing always.
I think the intent was to have objectives that were very precise. Academics is very broad, so that's everything under sun. We did a lot of great work with literacy, and we've made strides with that. We're starting to improve math, so in line with that, you know, things that we're doing with DNA math, improving math outcomes are also the top. The other ones were discussed at the annual planning summit pretty extensively. And one of the things we have to think about in terms of holding these off is that this is another delay to getting things in place so that we can execute for the next year, because there's a lot of work that goes behind putting these out there as objectives and goals and moving forward.
Okay, so we come up with a more specific statement about academic performance. How could a district not have academic performance as one of the strategic objectives, ever?
That's up to the board. These come from you.
Okay, these are the ones we talked about. In fact, Director DiBalla actually recommended that we concentrate on math outcomes, which is math academics. Does anybody else want time to address these strategic objectives?
Well, I would like to just point out that de-escalating high-impact behaviors is extremely academic because of the time loss that we currently see when high-impact behaviors are happening in the classrooms. And that is, that is a strategic-focused way to get improved academics. Improving academics ultimately is an operational objective. It's not a strategic objective. And getting kids to school on time is an operational objective. It's not a strategic one, unless your buses are completely failing and they're not getting the kids to school on time. So I don't think that by being as specific as these are, that that takes anything away from academic focus. Academics is what the whole deal is about to a great extent. And so, I mean, it's like redundant or something if you constantly make that the strategic objective. You need to be more specific, I think.
And again, looking back at what we previously did, maybe about eight years ago, we came up and said, we want to improve literacy, and that became a goal and a strategic objective. And we made strides toward that, and we've done a good work with that. To be able to kinda replicate that kind of performance, saying improving math outcomes, the metric is easy. Have math outcomes improved. To say academics in general, well, has math improved, has science improved, has social studies improved? It puts us more in a shotgun pattern than a very precise, on-target pattern for that. But again, it's a consensus of the board to say what these are, and then the administration will take action to work on whatever you put up here.
Thank you, Dr. Fletcher. Laurie?
When we had our annual planning summit, we discussed to the areas that we needed to focus the most on, and math was what was coming out. Also, when we were discussing classroom behavior, the increases in poor behavior, when we talked about what the teachers were also discussing was to de-escalate high-impact behaviors. The other day, John and I attended that presentation at Falcon Middle School about verbal de-escalation. And by the way, I really like what their vice principal is setting up. Instead of tying up a lot of teacher time, they broke them down into segments so they could bring them in with 20-minute increments to cover some of the de-escalation. And it was very insightful to learn what the teachers had to say. So I think that is academics, because a well-behaved classroom learns better. So we spent a day discussing all of this, and like I said, Jamie Lynn is just number four that you missed when you left earlier.
Oh, if I may, we are still focused on academics. That doesn't change. That's why we have the metrics and those dashboards that we created to keep track of that. The focusing specifically on math is because we had test scores that said our children were weak in math, mostly due to COVID loss. And so, yes, I'm speaking, please don't stop my first amendment rights. Thank you. But that's what we've seen in surveys and scores, is that math needed improvement. That's why we hired a math coordinator. We're still gonna focus on achievement and outcomes, and we're gonna use the dashboards to measure those. And by next year, the administration should be recommending goals to those metrics. But this is more to look at something that we were weak on and improve on. So Director DiBalla?
With improving math outcomes, I think we need to put improving math outcomes and achievement. That's extremely important to differentiate between an outcome and achievement, because we know there is a difference. So I would like to suggest that we add that phrase in.
So what I would recommend is a amended motion to add that, and I would say achievement and outcomes. The only reason why we said outcomes is, you know, we're gonna be using the metrics. So after this, once we approve these, the administration has to get together and plan an action plan and add those metrics. If our scores last year were a 40, and we won a 50 or 55, that's gonna come out in the action plan. But adding a motion to, you know, doing an amendment to the motion to say, I wanna add achievement before outcomes, or achievement and outcomes is proper.
Yeah, so I, well, I amend.
To add achievement.
To add it. I amend the original motion to add achievement before outcomes on the improving math outcomes.
Second?
Okay, so now we're only gonna vote on the amendment. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna breathe, I'm gonna bring that up, okay?
I still have some questions.
So it says improving math outcomes. We're gonna say improving math achievement and outcomes. Can I have a vote on the amendment?
Do we wanna go through all of the issues before we vote, or are we gonna amend one at a time? I have questions above the others.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just state this as a matter of professionalism. Board docs were out since last week. We have to ask these questions in writing to the administration or the president of the board before the meeting so we can address these things and have them added or whatever before the meeting. That has not been happening in the last few meetings.
President Graham? You have a motion, and you have an amended motion. It's proper for you.
I understand that, so. Let's vote on the amendment.
DiBalla?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Weeran?
Aye.
So the first student-focus objective is now improve math achievement and outcomes. Now we're on to, let's discuss de-escalating, or let's just say, two minutes. Set the clock for each director to say what they want about strategic objectives. Each.
Point of order, discussions cannot be limited. Robert's rule says up to 10 minutes for two rounds. If we use less, that's what we go with. But I don't think the chair gets to dictate how long debates could go for. It's not in Robert's rule.
Thank you, and I'm gonna rule on your point of order as the chair, and I'm gonna say, no, that's not correct. Rogers rules for, Roberts rules for big parliamentary-type boards, which are 19 or more, tend to allow what you're discussing. But we, as a small board, specifically, do not debate each agenda item 10 minutes, two times each. And that has been spoken about ad nauseam, and two minutes, please. So Jamie Lynn, you got your two minutes. Are there any other objectives that you would like to talk about? Or, you know, we can amend, talk about these one at a time, or amend one at a time?
Just for clarification, this is a board discussion. So in order for me to really have a good board discussion, that is not an email question to one person. It needs to be something that I can openly discuss with all five of us, just to clarify. With the pursuing local financial support, I, are we on the next one? The de-escalating, are we doing it one at a time, or are we doing all together?
Go ahead with the escalating high-impact behaviors.
Okay, I also agree that we should be de-escalating high-impact behaviors, so. So I agree with that, that one.
Director Lou?
So we start, we started going into this during the annual planning summit. We have an obvious disagreement on what causes and what fixes high impact behaviors. I sure would like to see the district take on a role or to hear from the experts. Because what I heard at the annual planning summit was more SEL. And my argument was that we have had SEL for 10 years in this district. What is the measure of efficacy of SEL? I'd like to hear it. If somebody reports to me, you know, the level of behaviors from here to here during these last 10 years. We can keep going, you know, higher. But so far, all I see is that we had had SEL for 10 years. We haven't had the efficacy that we were hoping because we're still having poor grades, poor CMA scores. And horrible behaviors according to teachers. And so what is de-escalating high impact behaviors? More SEL? I don't, I don't think so. I think we need to have an intelligent discussion in front of the, with full transparency to the public, who a lot of them are concerned about SEL. And, and say, what is the real answer to de-escalating? You know, we have to talk about the social aspect. Or is SEL causing kids to be, uh, uh, what's the word? Degressing in their behaviors? I think that is a, because it's such a expansive problem, not just in D49, but in across the nation. This is a huge topic across the nation that we can't just say more SEL. More SEL when there's no evidence that SEL is working. So to me, that statement is so vague. And we're talking about rising mental health, rising suicide, whatever. It, it cannot just be a statement.
Thank you. Time's up.
Agree on.
Ms. Thompson, Director Thompson, do you have two minutes?
The, we spent a day at the annual planning summit coming up with an overall plan. And the administration comes back to us with specifics. Just to point a clarification, we actually were not discussing SEL at the annual planning summit. And it's not really one size fits all. There are multiple different programs. And to say they all don't work and things are getting worse. Since the schools have reopened, there have been more behavior issues. We've had more expulsions and we've had multiple presentations. So it's easy to debate what comes first, the chicken or the egg. The purpose of strategic objectives is for the administration to come back to us with a plan. And it's not all one size fits all. It's not all lumped under social emotional learning. And just for clarification too, we've had many of these programs longer than 10 years. Because I don't know how I was attending Rachel's challenge 15, 16 years ago, if it's only been here 10 years ago. There are anti-bullying programs. There are different things that are coming about. But we just have to be honest about what happened at the annual planning summit. And that we gathered all of our information together prior to the annual planning summit and it was submitted. So this isn't just a statement, we're going to de-escalate high impact behaviors. That means we're tasking the administration to come up with a plan on how to handle this. And what a pathway forward would look like. And that's all I have.
Turn back 35 seconds of your time, Mr. Van Wieren. Nothing? I have nothing. I think Director Thompson covered it and Director DeVola covered it. So now we'll move on to Director, I'm sorry. The operational, that was the operational focus. You guys kind of put them out of order there. Let's talk about the staff focus, pursuing local financial support. Does anybody have any questions as to what that is? Come to the, that slide, please. Do you have any questions off the bat for Director Flec, or Dr. Fletcher? As to what this means? This is what, exactly what was presented at the annual planning summit. Director DeVola?
I don't have questions. I have discussion.
Okay, please discuss.
Okay, so this is a, a very important topic. Because we know that teachers deserve the, the best of, that we can give them. They deserve to be paid so much more than they get. They pour their hearts, minds, souls, spirits into everything that they do. The problem that I do have with the finding local financial support and going and supporting a mill levy override. Is I am concerned that it could possibly, actually, I'm highly concerned that it's not going to do what it's intended to do. Because of the financial situation of the people in our community right now. I have my tax statement right here. And it says very clearly how much we take out for District 49. $1,372 for property taxes. And people want to know where that money is going. They want to know exactly how it's being spent. And we're asking them to spend even more money to support teachers. And the question that we're going to have to fight is why can't you reallocate money to, to pay your teachers better? With the money that we're already giving you? Now, we already kind of know that answer because there's 20 different pots. And we can't just take money from one pot into the next, so on and so forth. But we have a very important problem here when we're communicating with constituents. So I do, I am concerned about this local measure. And also having teachers be advocates and be campaign, campaigning for this, I think puts them in a very precarious situation.
It does. Do you want me or Dr. Fletcher to address some of those concerns? Cause I think we have things that you may not be aware of or maybe have forgotten that will address some of those concerns.
Sure.
Okay.
Rock, paper, scissors?
No, we're fine. You want me to? Yeah, Jamie Lynn, your, your concerns are very valid. I mean, when you sit around your family table and you look right there and see what you have left to buy food and that kind of stuff and to pay rent, you know, it's just like, what is the school district doing with my money? What I can say from being here for about almost a decade now is very good things. And the teacher pay issue is one of those things that, okay, we don't like to get into national issues. But I have heard things around the country of wanting to make base teacher pay $60,000. I don't know that it's going to be successful or anything like that. But I know it is not compatible with our community. When we talk about mills and they're very transparent, we make sure that, you know, in fact, the board that you set with the DAC has the mill levy override committee. So you write the ballot language very specifically. It can only be used for those things it's written for. So if it says teacher compensation, that's all it can be used for. Nothing else can come into that equation to be, use anywhere else. If anybody thought that we're going to say, hey, we want to get some mill levy money and then we're going to switch it and do something else. We can't. Cause it's, at that point, we're legally bound to do that. Just like if, with our initiatives from the past, those all went to, and that's very transparent on financial transparency page. Those things that we got for mills in the past went for the things that we said they would go for, to the penny. So if people have concerns in that area, don't worry about that. But understanding that we're one of the fastest growing districts, probably the fastest growing district in this, in the state. Which means we probably have more per pupil revenue as we get more students. But we don't have industry like 20 or 11. We're a bedroom community. So as we grow, we're only growing to the extent of taxes on houses and per pupil revenue. And if we're going to honor and keep our good teachers, we have to make an effort to do it. And we need the community to be with us. So you bring up a very valid concern. And it's something that should not be dismissed or pushed to the side. So what we have to do is, I think this is a, a good objective. Like I said, I don't tell you what objectives I have, you tell us what to do with them. But I think it's one of those things where we talk about our teachers, we value our teachers. We have some great teachers who've been here for a long time, working for much less. And Jamie Lynn, you know better than anybody what a teacher's day is like. Married to a teacher, when I was on my first date with her, I said, okay, this is great. Three weeks later, when I was sitting there checking papers by the fireplace at night, say, this is, is this what I signed up for? So the day doesn't end at three o'clock or four o'clock or five o'clock. It ends when the work is done. And, you know, you know, my mom was a teacher. So it's one of those things where I personally understand that we can never pay them enough, but we can certainly pay them more. To make sure they have the ability to do things with their family when they're sitting around their table, thinking about food and rent and all that kind of stuff. John, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I actually do. And I'll get a little bit to the point quicker if, but I'll call on Mr. Miller before me.
Thank you, John, for recognizing me. Wanted to remind the board, for what it's worth, that the substantive discussion you had on the 11th went deeply into two areas. One was the idea of using Magellan, a highly respected firm, to do polling, to figure out the best approach and your community priorities and, and establish those before you go. And second, this was, this is really key and unique. This would be the first district based on Peter's proposal, Peter Hiltz's proposal, that we tied the on, the MLO to student achievement. And with metrics measured and that the MLO would go away, would sunset if those, those metrics weren't met. So it was really putting the district out there to, on a limb to say, you have to succeed if you're going to take this money.
So the next time I'm going to speak instead of letting Brad steal my thunder. Okay? This objective is only to start the process of looking into pursuing local financial support. This objective only looks at hiring a consultant to look into whether this is even feasible and what that plan would look like. So we're not actually calling for a mill levy override at this point. We're looking at, to see if it's feasible. And I will tell you, it is a conservative and constitutional role to do right taxes. We have a lot of complaints about the state and federal government overtaxing us. I would argue that the local community keeping the tax dollars here is much better idea than telling the state and the federal government to control their spending. But right taxes, where it's spent locally, is very important. And I will say this to the community. You get what you pay for. Okay? And we have not been paying to retain highly effective teachers. That's why we lose 17 to 20% of our teachers. We have not been paying new teachers to stay beyond three or five years. Because they can't make a living with the cost of living increases Colorado Springs and the surrounding communities have seen in just this last year. So this objective, without talking about mill, it's to look into whether that is feasible for our community. Not actually planning it out. Rick?
Well, to Lou's point about starting salaries for teachers nationwide. Cherry Creek School District has already announced their, their starting salary for next year is going to be $57,000. That is, that, that is like over the moon compared to what we can pay people. And, and, and so we've got to recognize that there is tremendous competition for teachers right now. We have shortages. We have long-term subs where we should have long-term contract teachers doing the job. And, and that's just not where we need to be. We need to make sure that we have the wherewithal to, to recruit and retain the high quality teachers, as John was saying. And, and, you know, 57,000 starting, that's already been announced. That was, that was announced two weeks ago. So, I mean, it, it's happening out there.
And we're not looking to match. We're looking to make it at least competitive for the area that we're in. Cause that's just where we are now.
So if we could stay on the topic of looking into pursuing local financial support, we can talk further about what that looks like.
Right.
Lori, Director Thompson, you have one thing to add to that portion of the discussion?
You know, it's always a sticky subject, especially in this district. It's a very conservative district when it comes to mill levy overrides and bond issues, because I've worked on both. We do not have a manufacturing base and that's a huge driver of funding for our schools. I pay taxes on three different properties in District 49. And if you combine all of those property taxes together, it is less than 50% of the per pupil funding. And so a lot of people think, well, here's the property taxes. But you have to look at the, the property taxes don't go as far as people think. This district has worked really well over the years with mods and pods and cutting corners. Anybody who's visited our administration building, we are not sitting in the lap of luxury when it comes to it. It's just a very difficult issue, especially with the people who live in our district, they're facing higher gas prices, inflation, the cost of groceries. And other strains on their budgets as well, not to mention increasing rent costs and, and other expenses. So it's a very tough issue. We're actually not forcing teachers. The hope would be is that teachers who also live in our district, who also pay property taxes here. It's a voluntary participation, so it's not forcing them. So it's a sticky subject, but it's what I think we should look into.
Okay, so we're kind of beyond the scope of this objective, which is pursuing, hold on, pursuing local financial support. So let's stay on that focus, pursuing local financial support. Director Lou?
So it was two years ago when I first came, they did the ML, the MLO through the, maybe less than two years. So I was paying a very close attention to the comments that were coming in about the MLO. And, and I was also paying very close attention to the D38 MLO that just happened. And that, that one failed also. So comments that really stuck out in my head is inflation. And now that was less than two years ago, so it is much worse now. We're talking, some of the food, food products are 50%, 70% higher than it used to be. Cost of gas, cost of living is just out the door. So the same concerns that there, people can't afford to even think about giving more money. Another comment that really stood out in my mind is that why do I want to give money to academic achievement that is not rising? That was, happened quite often. And to me, it's a valid concern. Why do we want to put more money into a district that's not raising the kids' scores? That is not an insult in any way. These are comments that I saw. And so how do you overcome that psyche, the, the, that, that kind of thinking? Even if you hire a consultant, which at the end of my two minutes here, I'm going to ask you how much that consulting costs, but you don't take up my time to, to tell me that. But anyway, we do need to go back, I think, to some of the comments made by the population. I believe that two years later is actually not better, it's worse because of cost of living right, and increases and rent increases. And so do we then want to run back around again and do this again and now paying a school finance consultant? So again, you've got to think about people's lives and this whole circle with teachers are not getting paid enough. If they live in a district, now you want to ask them to take some more money out, more money out so they can get paid more. We got to think about the average people that are not quite making it today.
President Graham?
Time's up. I don't want to address that. Or what, what is being said on the board?
I just want to put a fine point on it. We are very talented people in the district and the administration, but we can't do everything. And one of the things that we want to do is use a tested and proven firm to help us make those right decisions to steer us toward getting more finances for the district. So that's why we would use an outside firm. And as Mr. Miller said, one of the things that we would do when we finally got to the point of actually getting the mill out there is that we would tie it to academic achievement. So that if you give us money for five years and the mill is 10 years and we haven't achieved those, those goals, we would sunset and say, thank you for giving us some money to try. Here's a balance of your money back. But if we have achieved those things in five years, we're going to go on and continue to use that to pay teachers more money to be able to get what needs to be done. So it's not something, everything can't be homegrown. You know, I, I would say if, if you go to court without a lawyer, you're, you're in jeopardy. Cause you need somebody who has sound legal advice and that kind of thing. If you go to do your, if you go to do your business taxes, you own a business, without your accountant, you're probably in, in, in some, some scary water at that point too, use an accountant. Many things we could try to do ourselves, we won't do them well. We need a firm to help us do the things that we're doing and it creates efficiency. We're going to spend less to do it with somebody who understands how it's done and has done it repeatedly. Almost like Henry Ford's model on the assembly line, than we would do to try to put this together homegrown ourselves. And that's what we're talking about.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt to get the discussion on track. The discussion isn't, do we need, do, you know, are we approving a mill levy override? That is not the discussion. The discussion is, do we want to have a third part, do we want an objective where we hire a third party? That looks into pursuing what local financial support would be? All the discussions you're bringing up now would come into play and be more valid. you're bringing up now would come into play and be more valid when we actually have an action plan brought back to us on this issue. All we're doing right now is saying, pursue this issue, look into it. Is it a valid issue? Use a third party like Magellan, which Rick and I have both talked about several times, and in fact, places where Magellan was utilized, they actually have been very successful. Douglas County, which is a very conservative district right now, only lost their mill levy override this last election by one percentage point. They lost. Because, and it's deduced, subjectively, of course, that it's because the teachers' union didn't support it.
So how much?
Otherwise, it would have. But we're not talking mill levy override, we're talking, let's look into it as a strategic objective. Let's put resources to hire a third-party consultant to look into this and see if it's, if, if it's going to make a difference. And it is a creative and conservative proposal to tie it to achievement. A ten-year window.
So how much?
And at five years, if we're not hitting the metrics, two, it's my turn, Ivy. If we don't hit the metrics, then it drops dead at the five-year mark. Okay? That's enough discussion on this one. We're going to move to the next one, which is restoring stakeholder trust in the BOE.
Can you answer the question, how much? How much is this consultant going to cost us? This is taxpayers' dollars we're talking about. Can we say how much?
This is what they have to bring back. Once we give them permission to look into it, they will come back and say, this is what it's going to cost.
So we are not agreeing to hiring a consultant, we are agreeing to talking about a consultant?
We're agreeing to pursue, and they will come back with the cost.
Okay.
Okay? And they will tell us what the cost will be. If we don't like it, then we will retract the objective. Okay? But I think supporting education and supporting our teachers and staff and parents and students is what this community is about, when they understand the positions fully. And now, we're on to restoring stakeholder trust in the Board of Education. Can you bring up that slide?
It's there.
So you can sit down, because this isn't you. So, as far as restoring stakeholder trust in the Board of Education, we've had both a Voice of the Workforce survey, which rated the trust in the Board of Education. After ninety-two percent of our employees responded at a rating of forty-eight percent, beating out, being almost twice as low as the chief executive officer. We had a survey that went out to, or it was actually a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree, what they call evaluation, went out to key people. I think half the people in our SACS and DAC that were community members did not respond, and about half of the employees did not respond. But out of the ones that did, and senior leaders and ourselves, basically, there is very little trust in the Board of Education. And I forget what the score was, but it was in the threes. And so, one objective, which we talked about at the annual planning summit, was restoring stakeholder trust in the Board of Education. Director DeVola asked if we can focus on policy governance, which we added that. We would have to come up with an action plan that we would all approve at a later date as to how we would restore stakeholder trust in the Board of Education. And if you want to know why and who the stakeholders do not have trust in, you can read the comments, which, because they're identifiable, are in the executive content when they were briefed in the last couple of meetings. So, this one, we're going to gauge and focus and transparent efforts to reduce dissatisfaction with board performance and decisions. And we're going to look to increase satisfaction and support for board performance and decisions by focusing on policy governance and, you know, things we say. There's some indicators written there, which are basically, the top two are our surveys, the multi-rater assessment, okay, I called it a survey, it's an assessment. And then, earning positive, earned media, which means the Gazette and other people write positive things about us instead of all the negative things and aliases and stuff like that, don't report negative untrue things as well. So, do we have any discussion on this? Is there any, we can add detail to this as we come up with the action plan to restore trust in the Board of Education, but this seemed like a logical governance-focused objective. Director DeVola?
Yes. So, with the restoring stakeholder trust in the Board of Education, you have the term stakeholder here. However, when we went through the, the surveys, the surveys that went out were specifically just for people that are working in the district or who have been in DACS and SACS, so they're very highly involved with the district itself, versus...
Could you freeze the clock for a second? I just have a follow-on. Are you talking about, because I made the same mistake, are you talking about the VOW survey or the multi-rater assessment?
Both. The VOW survey was specifically just for staff.
Correct. And that was ninety-two percent respondents.
Right. The other survey, but did we survey the entire district of, of people who are the people who put us in office?
No. And I'll, I can explain why, or if someone smarter than me, like Dr. Fletcher, who understands multi-rater assessments. Multi-rater assessments are not surveys. So if I get this wrong, Mr. Miller and Dr. Fletcher, correct me, it's an assessment, okay? Just like we do on the chief officers of three sixty. And it is a smattering of people above, people below, and people adjacent. Okay? So it's more like a audit than it is a survey. And we decided as a board, I think it was unanimously five oh, that we will send it to people who are on the DACS and SACS and other committees that are non-employees. So, we don't pick who those go to, but it's not a, let's hear from everyone type of thing. It's an assessment, and it's more of an audit on the people, a smattering of people. Okay?
President Graham?
Time's up.
Yeah, you're exactly right. And, because I keep hearing recurring conversation about the size of the N for these things. That, those populations and those sizes were specifically asked for by the board. We had suggested a more broad survey, and we said, talk to those folks. When you talk about the size of the sample, it's the exact sample you requested.
And I believe this is the first year that we actually used community members, not employees, by the way. Okay, so, I froze your clock to try and answer that question, and go ahead, and you, you have the rest of the time.
I honestly think that this strategic objective is detracting and distracting us from having actual strategic objectives that would help the district as a whole. Because, first of all, that is, it's very interesting when you talk to people where the mistrust is coming from. Because it could be on both sides of the aisle. I think it's extremely important to not just get pigeonholed into, into knowing, into what that's, those two surveys or multi-raters were saying, especially since we represent everyone who is in our director districts. So that's important to note. I think it's a huge distraction for us to be doing that. Plus, is this a district-wide objective? Is this something that the district needs to be focused on? Because this is infighting amongst ourselves that we need to take care of as our own board, not for us to be saying, hey, District 49, let's work on this strategic objective.
Director Lou?
Yeah, so, my own point with that. So, lack of trust. This MTSS was done by, what, twenty-eight people out of a district of twenty-nine thousand? How could you put any accuracy on that? It needs to be with the stakeholders. But after this MTSS, which, in my opinion, was a perfect echo chamber, because it attacked certain people only, I actually went and called up a whole bunch of constituents that I haven't seen since campaign, which is now over a year and a half ago. And I said, you know what? How are we doing? What are we fighting for? Are we still fighting for the same thing from a year and a half ago? Do you want us to fight for those same things from a year and a half ago? Are we still talking about CRT? What are the topics you're concerned about? Should we stop fighting? Are we fighting too much? And the answers are, yes, we want you to keep fighting. We voted you in to represent us. We, amazingly, a lot of these people that we have never seen in the meetings here before, say, we're perfectly aware of what's going on on the board, the flip on the board, what we're voting for, what we're not voting for. And I said, you know, I can, I can handle it like a big girl. You know, tell me if I'm failing. Tell me if I am not doing what I'm supposed to do. And I, I am asking total strangers now, people that gave me money, you know, some generously, they didn't try to buy me or anything. And I said, tell me if I'm doing something wrong. Tell me if I could do better. And they said, no, we want you to keep fighting. That's why we elected you. This is the voice, now, obviously, I need to talk to a whole bunch of people, just a good handful, to get a test for how we're doing. They are very aware of what's going on on this board. So do they trust it? Probably because we're not carrying out anything I promised anyway. I have failed at every vote that matters to them, and I hope that changes. But so, it depends on who you talk to about why, where this distrust is coming from. I, for myself, wanted to seek the truth and find out, hey, if I'm screwing up, let me know. And so far, I'm doing okay.
Vice President Van Weren?
Time is up.
Vice President Van Weren, if I may. One of the things I wanted to point out, too, is that we have multi-source data, because one of the things that we didn't talk about, which is also included, is Dr. Briggs's analysis also found this. So we found this in the multi-rater three sixty. Dr. Briggs, who talked to literally everybody in small groups and surveys and such, he found the same thing, and then also the VOW. So we're talking about three different sources of data with stakeholders.
Director Thompson?
I was going to talk about, too, the participation rates with the Voice of the Workforce. And just a quick reminder that a lot of our workforce actually does live in the district as well, but there was community participation. As far as going to everyone, I, I always see benefit to stakeholder input, as long as it's done in a way that makes sense. But we had three different surveys with consistent results. And I do agree that there are a lot of echo chambers that go around, but unfortunately, a lot of what I've seen, too, is in our district, a lot of inaccurate information goes around. The majority of our votes are five zero. And we agree on, it's like Jack Briggs says, we agree on ninety percent of everything. And I think finding ways to work together is really important. But I think that we have to do a better job as a board in how we communicate with each other and getting accurate information out to the public. I think that's very important. That's all I have.
Director Van Weren?
I just want to make a comment about what I consider a serious misstatement of fact. When we have two thousand employees and ninety-two percent of them complete VOW surveys, that is significant. I would like to know who is expected to teach our kids if we don't have staff. And if half the staff does not trust the board, I don't see how we're going to keep two thousand employees around here. We're already having a problem with that. When I said fifty-seven thousand was the starting salary in Cherry Creek, I went and looked at our, our current schedule, and it's forty-two. Forty-two versus fifty-seven thousand. I'm sorry, but you can't go to the community for funding when the staff doesn't trust you, we're fighting constantly, and we're not even fighting about important things. You misrepresent what this board decides so many times, Ivy. I am, I am just sick of it. And if we are ever going to get anywhere in terms of improving the education of these kids, it is going to be through staff. And if you treat the staff the way you're treating them, if you talk about the staff the way you're talking about them, they will not be here to help do it. And we will not have improved academics in this district.
You're going to need to clarify how I'm badly talking about.
It is Rick Van Weren's time.
You're going to need to come up with...
Please do not interrupt someone else's First Amendment rights.
You're lying.
Okay? And you just violated our written decorum from Robert's Rules, which is, don't impugn other people's motives. You just called him a name and a liar. And I will say that...
And he talked badly about me. So why don't you start with your example of a better...
He didn't call you a liar, Ivy. I didn't hear that. I heard you call him a liar. And you will stop it, and we will apply proper decorum among all members.
Thank you. It's not just me.
If you read the comments of the surveys and the assessments, yes, it's mostly just you. Okay? But I'm not calling you a liar. Okay? My time, please? Did you finish? Okay. So, if you don't think that, so I haven't even talked yet, but you're asking me to resign. Very, very good. Very, very good. Just so you know, I won't resign, and I think you're wrong. But if you want to talk about echo chambers, I've been to the schools, okay, this semester. I've been to the conferences and the meetings. And by and far, when the community does not have trust in the board or an element of the board, then it affects the district. It affects the employees. If you don't understand that, I can slow it down and say, if they don't trust the board, then they're going to leave. Then, we're not going to be able to pay our employees what they are worth. Okay? Building trust in the board is something as simple as not sending proton emails that rip apart the board, other board members, and call them morons. It's not using aliases. It's talking from a position of knowledge and trust. It's understanding that there are other opinions out there, and they can differentiate from your opinions. That is what builds trust. Actions and honesty build trust. Okay? So, moment of silence for the truth. Time is up. We've had the discussion. Let's vote on the strategic objectives.
DeVola?
No.
Graham?
Yes.
Lou?
Nope.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Weren?
Yes.
The motion passes. We'll expect action plans of these strategic objectives that support teachers, parents, students, and our community. When?
The administration takes your motion, takes your action, then we will come back with, with the date, probably talk to it in agenda setting about our progress. We should be able to get these fairly quickly, but not so rapidly that we are hasty. We want to make sure that we have these are reasoned.
Typically, we have a discussion at the end of March and a vote, and a regular meeting in April.
April, so about.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes with the one amendment. So we're going to have a hard, well, maybe we can get our guest speaker delayed eight-thirty, but let's go ahead and go to five point three.
I move that the board resolves to adopt Proposal One as presented to be the new configuration for director districts.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Do we have any comments or questions about the director districts?
Yes. What is the definition of compact? And does this option meet it? Because it is really reaching down to specifically Precinct 406, that would open up that particular precinct for a particular person that's going to run. If you look at the picture of it, it is a stretch to call that compact.
Okay, so now I'm going to open it to the, Dr. Fletcher, to answer, and I'm going to ask our legal counsel to be on standby to say whether his explanation is correct or not.
Yeah, in creating the director district, we had to do, we had to do a lot, a lot of work, because a lot has changed. It's, first of all, it's based on the census. The original districts are based on the 2010 census. The new districts are on the 2020 census. Also what's changed is the precincts have changed. So we don't even have the same precincts we had when we originally... So we don't even have the same precincts we had when we originally made this. So when you take a look at that, I mean, the definition of compact, there is no islands in there, there is no incursions in there. So compact is a relative term. That's one of the things that we strove for. And this right here is a variance of only 5%. So this is the most compact, most contiguous, most even in population that we can derive from what we were given. So I don't certainly understand what you mean by compact. Are you saying just the physical size? Compact means together.
Compact, yellow, the yellow, the green, the blue, and the dark purple is all together. Pink goes all the way from, what, 105 all the way down to, oh, all the way down to Barnes and Stetsons.
That's because...
That is not compact.
That's because one of the factors in is nearly as equal in population. It just means that the pink area is less populated than the blue area. So for us to be able to get, say, 25,000 people in the pink area, it's that big, not because of geography, it's that big because of 25,000 people. Whereas on the corridor, when you look at the blue area, that's also 25,000 people. We have more cluster homes, more business, more apartments, and things like that.
If I may, the Merriam-Webster dictionary describes compact as solid, dense. And that is the definition of compact.
Yeah. So what you're looking at here is a population density map over a space. So 25,000 in that pink is compact.
I get that. We also have to think about the cultural aspect of this. This map, in case constituents don't notice, entirely flips what used to be green, lime green that goes all the way to the top, and pink. You're now making some huge changes for people who are used to being in a certain district, director district. You are flipping about 100 square miles there, 180 degrees. And I thought the entire district thing back in 2015 was to better represent the urban, which is about Long Powers, and the rural, which is east of Mark Shuffle. That's another shocking disruptive change there when you go vertically, north, south, splitting that entire power zone, Sand Creek Zone.
What I have to say is those are all interesting facts, but not relevant. Because when we talk about the things the law gives us, we're talking about compact, contiguous, as nearly equal in population, does not take that into account. That's why the statute was put into place to create a fairness that doesn't allow us to say, well, you know, maybe I want to throw this precinct in here over here or do something different like that. So the best thing I can say is we went through hundreds of these. It's just math, math and rules. And that's why we offer it to yourself and anybody on the board to give us an alternative to what we put together to be this efficient. It's Proposal One, Proposal Two, Proposal Three, Proposal Four. And one of the things to add to the conversation is that we did a survey over 350 district stakeholders. And they looked at the original film or video from the meeting we had when Peter first discussed this. And overwhelmingly, they said one or two. One or two. And when you look at the difference between those, they have some attributes that are similar to each other because we're using the same math. It's just a matter of in two, the variance is 7.3 versus 5%.
So I think actually Ms. Lee there mentioned this. I read the comments. And there was a lot of confusion about what they were voting for. And I talked to a lot of constituents in the same conversations I was having with people that I haven't talked to in quite a while. They said, we didn't get a survey. We didn't get a survey. So who got these surveys? I questioned how we're surveying some of these things.
What Dr. Lee was talking about was the comments. In the comments, there were several people, there were several, who thought...
I can answer that question. Surveys went out the way they normally do with District 49. We announce them at a published, regular meeting or a meeting. And then we put it on our Facebook page. There's no other way to... We don't do town halls. We don't stand on the street corner with a bullhorn. We have a method that we have used for decades with social media. You know, we may have other social media accounts that we also put it on. But we do it on our Facebook page and we do it at public meetings. And that is the, that is how we do surveys. It is always how we do surveys. That is how the survey is done. If you want us to change the purple and the green so they look similar to what the old map looks like, we can do that. We control the colors. They don't really matter.
Okay. So going back to something I actually...
I'm going to call on Mr. Van Weren because your time is up. You'll get another chance. Mr. Van Weren?
I just want to point out, if compact is actually the concern, the current map that we have actually has District Three going all the way from that north corner all the way to the bottom of where you see where Highway 94 is almost. The current compactness, it stretches much further than even this map does. This actually improves compactness. Although, I mean, we're just a huge district with very disparate population density. I don't, there's no good answer. And oh, by the way, I seconded the motion for the first proposal. But just to make it clear, I don't get to run again either if that proposal gets passed. This isn't about whether an incumbent gets to run again. And in fact, that is specifically something we're supposed to ignore by law. And I don't like it. I don't think it's great. If I got to write the laws, I might change them. I don't get to write the laws, so I'm not going to change it. But I think that we have some responsibility to follow laws. When this was originally, this whole system was put into place, there was only a 3% discrepancy. In 2017, my understanding is that there was a 6% discrepancy. I'm not sure what the discrepancy was in 2019. But if we had kept the current map that we have and just didn't change anything, a 40-something percent discrepancy is not going to stand any test of anybody. And we just can't go there. And so, you know, I think Dr. Lee's comment was appropriate when she said we should try to get this as close as possible because it's going to change rapidly as this district grows.
So since there seems to be a push for...
I'm going to call on Director DeVola. But you weren't identified, so you have to wait. Got to give everyone a chance to speak. Director DeVola?
Yes. This was a discussion we also talked about at the DAC. And some of the concern was the fact that it does split school zones, et cetera. Because they were kind of hoping it would be a little bit more towards where the school zones are. I know that's not what Peter had discussed at the annual planning summit, that that wasn't actually taken into account for these maps. But something we need to think about in the big picture is the voting block. So the people who are voting actually did not really have a say in what these maps are because we didn't survey them. We didn't survey the people who are voting. And so when they get their ballots or they do not get a ballot, and this is the second time they have not gotten a ballot during a school board election, they're going to be very upset that they were not able to even vote after having two consecutive terms. This was poorly planned. And it affects constituents in a very short amount of time. This needed to be done during an off year and not during election year. I know we're past the date on this time. But honestly, I think if we pass the date here after the election, we can go ahead and go through all these again and vote on them when it is not going to negatively affect the voters who are coming up to this next election. And we could take the consequences for being out of compliance or et cetera. However, I think that's the right thing to do for the voters in our district.
Well, what would happen is we would be compelled. We wouldn't be able to skip the election. They would compel us to take the Proposal One or whatever proposal is most efficient. So it's not a matter of, I guess, to put a fine point on it is that we can't consider zones. We can't consider anything but the criteria that's given to us from the statute. And it's very clear and cut and dry. And I know it changes things, but even the first time we did this, other setting directors, setting where you are now figuratively, they were, they no longer had a district. And that's something that's going to happen each and every time. But we don't have the leeway to simply say, let's not do it now and then have them come get us.
I'm going to call on Mr. Miller.
So I'll just offer a couple of things. One, the law really centrally is focused on the question of whether they're as equal as possible. And so to that end, as you know, the administration proposed these four proposals that they found to be as close as possible numerically. And then for at least three weeks now, or two and a half weeks, I directly asked all the directors, I know Mr. Hiltz asked all the directors, to work with constituents, find other options. And we explored, as you recall, on February 11th, a couple of proposals that some directors had brought. And we found that they were not very close in terms of the numeric equality. The precincts were changed in 2019. And we had the obligation last year by March 1st to do this. Because we lost our COO and CBO in the course of the last year, frankly, the district lost track of doing this on a timely basis. Just because we are out of compliance now doesn't mean that it's okay to stay out of compliance. The fact of the matter is, any interest to constituent at this point could bring legal challenge. And we need to repair this. And it needs to be done by March 1st of this year. You're compelled to take a vote tonight.
Director Thompson?
Just a couple of things. When you talk about having voter input, there was voter input in 2015. 74% of voters voted to split into director districts, which are governed by statute. It is not gerrymandering. It's not any of the things that I have seen going around. It is to be divided by population, contiguous. There are state statutes that govern this. And yeah, it's unfortunate, some people don't get to vote. And that has happened in every single district. There has been times when they could not vote. But anyone who wants to change it, they can do a ballot measure and go back to at-large. All they have to do is get the votes that take it away from director districts and put it at-large. Major changes happen and they tie in with the census, which is every 10 years. There are other adjustments that have been made along the way. What bothers me is just that we are opening up for a potential legal challenge when the statutes are clear on how we're supposed to do it. So that's, I guess that's all I wanted to say is that we have an obligation to honor what the voters passed into law by 74% in 2015. If somebody is not happy with that, they need to initiate and push forward with a ballot measure to go back to at-large districts. And then everyone in the district gets a chance to vote in every school board election.
Thank you. Now, my two minutes? There's a little bit of, I want to say, people not fully informed out there. As Lori said, this was the people's will, 70, basically almost 75% to 25, three to one. I am not going to disregard the people's will with that large margin. And for the people that think with SEL or whatever I do, you guys are the extreme minority in not looking after children's well-being. It's also a state statute to comply, and I am not going to violate the law as some people are demanding. And with that, I'm going to reserve the remainder of my time. And we're going to do one more round since we have people that still don't get what compliance statute and people's will is. So please, who else wants to speak? Director DeVola?
Yes. So when the voters decided to put our director district in, was that something that was done by constituents and they themselves put in a ballot measure? Or was that something that the district advocated for?
I voted no to that. And I don't know, because I wasn't on the board, whether the district advocated. But I think there were members of the board that did advocate for it because director districts breaking down into smaller geographical regions within our district is a method by law to allow for representation. And it seems to me that 70, almost 75% of the people of our district thought that that would better represent them.
Yeah. And I have the history on it, I was there for it. It originated with the board. And the whole idea was being able to have fairness in terms of representation across the district. The board deliberated on it. They decided to put as a ballot measure and went out there. Many of you got to vote on that. President Graham voted no, but 74% of the people voted yes. And that's when we enacted director districts. And once we did that, it statutorily linked us to the things we're doing right now. It doesn't mean it can never change, but it can't change for the next election because we have to put this out there. But if there became a will of the board to be able to say, let's dissolve the director districts or let's have 14 directors or something like that, that is something you could propose and put out there on a future ballot.
Actually, I think that the majority of director districts is seven. Yes. Okay? Finish?
Okay. So then that might be something that we could be looking into in the future of whether or not we really, people really want the director districts now that we've had them for so many years to see whether or not they're very effective or not, especially with the growth that we're having in D49 and the expansion and the rural becoming very urban quickly, that these things might not be needed in the future. So that's something to consider in the future.
Director Lou?
So going back to what you just said, the original reason why we did this was to have better representation. And now you're saying that doesn't matter because I feel like one and two.
I'm saying it's mathematically representative over even area of population.
I'm pretty sure I was told when I first got on the board that it is so that the rural, I cannot say that word right, but urban and the other is better represented by the way the director districts are set up. And this is, and now, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to fight for my position. I don't even know I'm going to run. But it's just that right now, I'm looking at this. It is a flip-flop of everything we ever known. And for D49, everything is flipped all over because it's like you put something into a blender and you chopped it all up with the exception of a couple of objectives. I'm not fighting for my position, okay? I'm just looking at this and go, that is not anything like we know. It does not correlate with any of the power zones, Sand Creek Zone and the Falcon Zone. It is what it is. I know which way it's going to go. But I'm just going to stay for the point that culturally, we are so concerned about culture. Culturally, what do people ask people who are in the certain, the pink area right now? They're green right now, they're going to be pink. They're going to be represented by certain people they may not want to have in, and so on. But culturally, we're basically going against what we did back in 2015, which is the representation of urban versus the East Side. That's all.
What I want to say is that...
You don't have to answer that.
Okay.
Okay? To keep the conversation moving, I actually answered that question to all three of the new board directors. And I never said anything about urban or rural or any of that stuff. Okay? So there is an article on our webpage from 2015 that explains it all. And you can go to that website. It's on the D49 website. You can go to the statutes and read the statutes. Okay? And we can put the websites up on Facebook if people want to go look there or whatever. But culturally, it's not in a statute. Okay? So right now, we were seeing how the math is calculated on 11 February, as Mr. Miller said. And we addressed the variance. And we asked if there are any additional configurations that you want administration to consider. Those were submitted. Mr. Hiltz ran through them in the spreadsheet or whatever the program is. And we showed that those configurations were not compliant. So we've had time, as, you know, some of the speakers of public forum asked, yes. Public was notified. The public voted three to one. The public was notified again. And board directors had chances to bring variance and other configurations to look at. And none of them were compliant. So now we're here for a vote. Oh, second. That this is the second go-around right now. Oh, Director Thompson, sorry. Go ahead.
The only thing I was going to address, as far as dividing it by zones, that means we have to execute a director, because there are four zones, and the I-Connect zones covers the entire district in different areas. And so it's not feasible to say, okay, this one covers this zone. The, the school zones are separate from the director district zones, so I wanted to just clarify that real quick. And like I said, if, if people are not happy, they can definitely look into putting that measure on the ballot to go back to at-large districts, and there's pros and cons to both. So I just wanted to say once again that we have, we took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Colorado. That includes statutes and things that were passed by the voters. This is not a lot of what it's been made out to be. For instance, like I said, the first proposal would mean that Rick and Ivy could not run again this election. They could run again, by the way, in two years, because they'd be, I think, in the same district as you, Jamie Lynn. And so it doesn't mean they can't ever run again, they actually can run again. And like Ivy said, she wasn't even sure she was going to run again. I don't know if Rick had even made that determination. The bottom line is, is that we have state statutes we have to abide by, as well as what the voters passed. And so I know there are some who want to disregard the will of the voters, and I really, it, it troubles me just a bit, because if we are a constitution republic, and if voters pass this in 2015, and we just say, hey, we don't like it anymore, so we're just going to disregard it, that to me seems to be an abdication of our fiduciary obligation as a director. And that's all I had to say.
Time for a vote.
Is there a reason why the pink and the green are swapped? Or is that something that we can change back?
I don't actually think it matters.
Because it makes more, it would make more sense to keep it more of the way that...
Right, well, I had, my director district right now is, goes as far north and as far south as the actual boundaries. Okay? Doesn't really matter what the colors are. Let's vote.
Davola?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Lou?
Nope.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Wieren?
Aye.
The motion passes. The direction to the administration is make sure the county knows this, and they'll, you know, you guys do the election planning for the next election.
Yeah, we'll take proposal one to the county clerk and get it filed, and then it'll come up so the ballot, so the ballots are correct.
Yes. Okay. District governance and leadership configuration, five point four. Bring up five point four. Mr. Fletcher, Dr. Fletcher. Five point four. And I'll talk about this, just, just bring up the briefing. No, I just want him to bring up the briefing. You still make the motion.
All right, Tom, are you ready?
I'm kind of struggling on this motion, because before, we had talked about proposal two and proposal three during the APS. Proposal three seemed to move up, but the way this is written, it's moved to select the two chief officer or one superintendent, so I guess at this point, just to make a motion on one of these choices and then move forward.
Correct.
I move to select the one superintendent model as presented in proposal three.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Bring up proposal three.
It's there.
Okay. Where it says, Chief Education Officer, this is basically the board decides the leadership configuration. The leadership then determines the rest of the structure based on approval of the board. So if this superintendent model pa, superintendent passes, then we will go ahead and have the administration work on what the rest of that's going to look like, and they're going to need time for that. So... Threw me off there. Okay, discussion?
Well, as a point of information, so this chart is not exactly the way that it was intended when, when he drew it. He, when he presented this, there were some additional embellishments to the chart. The CABO on the right had a dotted line to the Board of Education that was for the chief business officer to still have a dotted line responsibility directly to the board. Also, the titles across, you know, those, this, this chart wasn't kind of finished.
Yeah, you could take the chart off. Sorry, I shouldn't have you do that. This is just, we vote on the leadership being one person or two people. Right? The motion was made for one, so whatever happens underneath either model, the administration has to come back. Okay? So Director Davola?
I think it'd be very important to speak to the publics and on record at this open board meeting, where they can video record of the pros and the cons, or the why we are going towards this proposal, just because you know that communication is very important. And so this process came through, I don't know if Mr. Van Wieren wants to kind of backplay a little bit about how we got to this point. Would you be willing to kind of share with the public about how we got to this point? And then I will take the, when we, what we talked about.
Freeze the time, I'm actually going to ask Director Van Wieren, since he was the lead on that effort. So explain how we got here.
So General Briggs interviewed lots of people through the district. He came up with a metric, a matrix of attributes, and asked people to rate different attributes against some of these organizational configurations. The, the basic range of, of organization structures that were looked at ranged from a single superintendent with a very flat organization to the, going back to the three-chief model and, and, you know, kind of doing it that way. The, in, in the end, I think that people felt comfortable with the idea that the dotted-line relationship of the chief financial officer was, or chief business officer, or whatever we decide to ultimately call him, was, was still, had merit, and that the completely flat organization that we're currently running is, is difficult to expect a superintendent to maintain and keep their sanity at the same time. And so I think the, you know, the, the discussions that were had in the small group meetings and in the, and in the, and in the larger meetings, for that matter, tended to start to gravitate toward the idea that, that we're probably not at either of those two ends, and that we're doing something that's in the middle, that's, that's got some of the same benefits that we get out of a superintendent, like we're currently running, but has a little, a little more vertical to it in terms of making sure that people have a direct reporting relationship with somebody that, that's a subject matter expert, particularly in the finance area.
Close. The, the reason why we went through so many superintendents, as was explained, I think during the APS, is the board. Not this board, previous boards. They hire someone, they don't like someone, the board changes, they fire them. They gave them a golden parachute. Hired someone, fired them, gave them a golden parachute. Hired them, fired them, gave them a golden parachute. So the board in about, I want to say around 2011-ish, 12, decided, they, they had a, some, a couple people come in, they looked into this particular innovative model with the right personalities, they were each in an area of expertise, we didn't have to worry about a superintendent with a multi-year contract getting golden parachutes, and we didn't have to worry, they were in a one-year contract cycle. And as talent dries up and talent becomes competitive to hire people, that may have to change. But that is, okay, now 119, back to your time.
One thing I'd like to know is the discussion, we went into great discussion with zone leaders as well as central admin, at why we were leaning towards proposal three. And one of the main things that came out of that discussion was having an education person who's filtering information. So for example, if zone leaders need something, they can go directly to the chief education officer, and whatever decisions are made with that chief education officer that influence financing or operations, instead of having to go through three people, they could go through one person, and that one person is able to communicate to the other people with an education filter, to keep everything very focused on education and what the zones need for classrooms, and it helps to filter down into, for the specific teachers. So it keeps everything in this organization focused on the education piece, so that way everything's focused on that, because the financial officer and the chief, or the chief, what's the other one? Business officer may not have the educational background for making decisions. That was part of the reason we were leaning towards proposal three as well, because there would be that educational filter.
Thank you. Director Lou? Director Thompson, you want to go?
We covered this, just so you know, the public knows, we covered this in the annual planning summit. It was really interesting to watch it shift away from proposal two to proposal three, but I understood the thought process behind shifting proposals, and I feel pretty comfortable with going forward with this direction. And I also wanted to say thank you to Jack Briggs. I thought he did a very good thorough job of laying out a lot of different proposals and getting community input on this.
And just a note to that, Jack's Briggs has said he's going to bring a final report to the, whether he presents it or it's just an information, we'll see something in writing. Director Van Wieren? Okay. Director Lou?
So during the annual planning summit, proposal one was the one that, wait, what's proposal one? Two, three, four, at the bottom, was based on Jack, General Spriggs' research, surveys, and conversations with just, just about everyone important. Well, everybody's important, but everybody that has a decision-making process, part of the process. And so he came up with one, two, three, four. How do we end up just looking at three right now? I, I, I would kind of think that, again, for public transparency, that we talk about the pros and cons of each one, which is in this document, and that the public gets to hear about it.
The summary of those things were actually in the packet that was at the annual planning summit, they are not included in this package.
Right, so I, I don't know that it is fair to just now have one on the table, when that's a third option that somebody we hired and paid money for is pick this choice three. So is it fair for us to just go to three without talking about the first two, and then why it was recommended by the person that we hired to recommend?
Okay, so, in answer to your question, Jack's Briggs said these are the proposals from the interviews he conducted. He didn't actually make a recommendation. Secondly, I've already explained at this meeting that we're picking the top layer, not his individual proposals. So if you go to February 11th, you can bring up the discussion he had, I think was included in here. Just trying to figure out what number it is, hold on. Reconfigure, reconfiguration, no, director restructure. So there was a February 11th workshop, which is what this brief is, and then there was some other stuff. But we wrote down the, you know, pros and cons of the COAs, and we didn't capture them in a presentation. So I hope that answers your question. The motion is choosing the superintendent model. And the rest of the organization, and the, the rest of the configuration will be figured out by the administration, presented to the board. Mr. Miller?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Graham. I just wanted to point out that I would be very utilitarian.
Excuse me. Amelia, thank you. I can't believe you stayed awake. All right. Okay.
From, we, we discussed this perhaps a little bit under the tide on February 11th, but all of this stuff's been well discussed on February 11th, by the way. But one of the things that we did point out, I want to say that Paul Anderson and I both wanted you to be aware of, is it would be very useful, if you go to a single leader from a global hiring recruitment sort of perspective, the title ought to be superintendent. That's, that's a clear and understandable title in the industry.
That is the motion. Superintendent, not chief officer.
Just want that to be clear.
Yes, thank you.
And I think what Brad said, that if people look at the package, they may see one model that said superintendent. That is not the one we're considering. It's the one that was basically single leader, strong deputy, but we'll call that person superintendent.
Yes, thank you. Okay? So further discussion, Director Davola?
Yes, it's very important to note that it's not proposal one. And the main difference in what's not proposed here, like the public can't see it, was what Rick was talking about, of the dotted line where the CABO could have direct access to the Board of Education, and the Board of Education could also speak directly to the CABO. However, the CABO would be under the chief education officer, which I think is a very clear distinction from proposal three to proposal one, which is the superintendent model. In this case, it would not be what everyone, it would be different from a regular school district.
And the term may not actually be CABO, because it sounds like a Caribbean vacation spot.
Okay.
Okay. If, if there's no further discussion, I have a speaker on Zoom that has to come on. I think we need to vote on the motion. Roll call.
Davola?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Wieren?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. It sounds like we're really dysfunctional, because we agree. So anyway, we're going to skip six point one for a moment and bring up six point two by Zoom. Yeah, we're going to direct the administration, which is part of, they have to come back with the action plan and the rest of the...
The administration takes a direction, and we will create a model to bring back to you.
Thank you. I like the way you repeat that. I gotta, train Peter that way. Okay, six point two, education legislative update. We have a change. State Senator Paul Lundin was unable to make it at the last minute. We have, I'm going to have Mr. Miller introduce her.
This is Representative Rose Puglisi, who is, represents El Paso County. I got to tell you that her, her district is adjacent to, and I'm not sure exactly crosses into District 49. Don Wilson was hoping to come down. He's a state rep that does represent a lot of District 49, and he was weather precluded. Rose has been just remarkable, she's on the Education Committee, she's Assistant Minority Leader in the House of Representatives, and so she's on to share with us some perspectives on the current legislative session.
Rose, you are on camera.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. So I was asked to give this kind of brief overview of what's going on in the legislature. I am on the Education Committee, so there's a lot going on in education. We actually have multiple bills up tomorrow on a variety of topics. A lot is focused, has been focused on, there's been a lot going on in the charter school space. But as far as public schools are concerned, and I know charter schools are also public schools, and you have charter schools within your district, but I wanted to focus on two things. One is, the governor has some ideas around additional resources for school districts on, for math. We all, all... We already know that reading has been an issue in Colorado, but our math scores are also incredibly low. And because of that, the Governor wants to have more of an initiative around math. When he and I first discussed it, I talked about how reading, the new math curriculum without judgment, although I struggle to help my fifth grader and second grader with their math work. But when math changed over, it became more reading intensive, and so if kids are struggling with reading, they're also going to be struggling with math. So, we had a lot of conversations around that. They're also giving, the state wants to do more around reading, but they also want to beef up math resources. So, the Governor has come to me and asked me to help him work on kind of what that looks like around math. It seems on its face, like, very interesting, to put some additional resources for school districts to help with the math curriculum and give those additional interventions. I want to see what it looks like in practice. Haven't seen a draft yet of the bill, but there has been some great robust conversations in the education community around it. So, I'll keep you all posted on what that looks like. I want to make sure that District 49 has the ability to access that money. They were looking at 24 million over two years, and we all know 12 million isn't going to go very far with all of our school districts. So, just want to make sure that, obviously, there'll be benefits to the school districts in my district. I have three school districts in House District 14. I know that Senator Lundin is also talking with the Governor's Office, and so I think there'll be some progress around math resources, and I will keep you all posted on that. And then, there's been a lot of discussion around the education formula, especially with Joint Budget Committee members. So, Joint Budget Committee is the committee that really focuses on the budget. The long bill will be coming out soon. And the Constitution says, the Colorado Constitution says, that the state of Colorado will provide free public education. I personally don't believe that we've prioritized our resources as a state appropriately in order to fund those obligations. And that's why school districts continue to struggle with funding. We've talked a lot about the campaign finance, I'm sorry, the school finance model, the formula, whether it still works. It sounded like before, you know, because I just came on, there were a lot of discussions, and I know Senator Lundin has been very engaged in these discussions, around what does a new formula look like? Where are there some opportunities? We want to make sure there's obviously benefits to the school districts in our district. And so, when I came on to my first committee meeting on the School Finance Interim Committee, they basically said we're going to give some more resources to special education, and they're not looking particularly at this point at changing the school finance formula yet. I think it's coming. We thought it was coming this year. It does not sound like that is happening. So, there's been some conversations with the JBC members. There's a couple of JBC members who are very interested in education and making sure it gets the appropriate funding. What I don't want to see is us go to the ballot, which is definitely a possibility. We've heard there is a ballot question potentially coming to better fund education. I would rather see a reprioritization of the current existing budget within existing appropriations to prioritize education to get the funding that it needs without going back to the people for more money. But that is definitely out there. They intend to do that with Tabor refunds, which would be, I mean, for some of us who truly believe Tabor is a good thing, it will be the end of Tabor potentially in Colorado. So, I think there's a lot going on around there. I have yet to see a ballot question or legislation to refer it to the ballot, but there is a large focus on getting education funding. How we do it, I think, is more of the question than whether or not we need to do it. I think there's a concerted common ground effort that, yes, there needs to be proper funding of education. We just have some different ideas as to how to do it. So, I think those are going to be the two things you're going to hear the most about this session thus far. And at that point, I'm going to stop and open up for any questions. You all have, or bills that you're tracking that you want to put on my radar.
Right.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can. It's a little echoey, but I will try my best.
Okay. Mr. Nencaro, if a board member has a question, that mic or from here? And, board members, I've emailed you Amy Atwood's Legislative Update link, so you can come up and see what the education bills are. She sent that out before, but I wanted to make sure you had it today. So, let's go ahead and, very succinct questions about bills. I'll start it off. HB 23-1003, status and what are we looking at?
How did that come through? HB 23-23?
1003.
-1003. 1003.
That's the School Mental Health Assessment Bill that is being pushed to, I'm not sure if it's to force schools to have mental health assessments of students or to opt-in, opt-out, provide resources, not sure.
And so, it's an opt-in, opt-out for what type of resources?
Mental health resources.
Mental health resources.
I think it's still in committee. It doesn't have any Republican sponsors. Dave, I'm going to send you that same document.
Okay. And I don't have it on my radar yet. Is it coming to education, do you know, or is it going to behavioral health?
It's going to health, is what I've heard from the community.
Did I miss a question?
I think we're trying to make this a little bit easier on you.
Okay. Okay, thanks, sorry. Ah, perfect.
Hey, Rose. HB 23-1003 is the School Mental Health Assessment concerning the creation of the Sixth Through 12th Grade Mental Health Assessment Act. And it seems like Denver is trying to push schools to perform mental health assessments on students sixth to 12th grade. I'm just wondering if you've heard anything of that, if it has any resources to it, if there's an opt-out for school districts or an opt-in for parents, because we don't want to force parents to do something like that, and how do we kill it?
Okay. A lot of great questions. So, the mental health assessment for students did go through committee. I haven't seen it on the House floor yet. It does have a lot of support. We had a lot of people testifying against it because kids 12 or older is where it's targeted. Parents can opt-out and say, no, we do not want mental health assessment for a child, but the child can opt-in and override the parent's consent.
At what age?
Twelve. And I have an 11-year-old who thinks she knows everything, and she's very close to 12, and I will say she does not know everything. And I'm still her mother. So, I think the reason you're not seeing any Republicans on there is because we actually believe in parental choice and parental consent, and so we have an issue with this bill. Our numbers, obviously, so about how we kill it, you know, we're going to run some amendments when it does get to the floor, obviously to take out the child's ability to override their parents. But the reality is, the numbers are what they are. 19 Republicans, 46 Democrats. If this is the will of some of the people in that chamber, and there's a majority of them, it will go over to the Senate. Now, I think we do have some work that we can do on the Senate side because those numbers are closer than they are in the House, and I'm sure Senator Lundin is all over this. I have a check-in with him, so we'll talk about that. But I do think there, you know, we want to make sure the kids get the resources that they need. We also want to make sure parents aren't cut out of that conversation.
Thank you so much. AB, HB 23-1109, School Policies and Student Conduct. And it seems like we're trying to figure out what the impact of that bill will have on districts and whether we're actually going to be able to hold discipline.
Right. I've heard some scuttlebutt about this, but it hasn't come forward yet, at least not in the Education Committee. I'll have to check to see if it's, it should go through Education Committee. So, it hasn't come before us yet. I'm going to get some more information on it and take a look at that. I'll pull it tomorrow, and then I can email you all or, you know, email your people to get it out to you so that you can have some more information. But I'll keep you posted. I'll track this one for sure, and I'll keep you posted as it goes through committee.
Okay. Board, if you look at the spread, at the link I sent you, those are the names of bills. Do you have, do you want any clarification on any bill? If you do, say what the number is and say what the name is, and then I'll ask it here.
Perfect, thank you.
Rick? Do you got any questions about? Nope. Director Thompson? We're going to have more of these, by the way. Senator Lundin is going to try to join us on March 9th. Okay. Director Lou?
I've already written to Senator Lundin about one of them that I'm passionate about. I'm planning to write a lot more directly to the senators involved, so I don't have any questions, no.
Which one?
Mental health being one of them. I can't remember which one I wrote to Lundin about just two days ago. I'm going to be writing a lot, so I don't have any one that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about a lot of them.
Okay. Director DiVola?
Yes, she had mentioned about the resources for education, and one of them saying that they weren't happening this year. I didn't quite catch what she was referring to. For budget, for money. New formula for money.
Yes. So, Brett Ridgeway, in prior years, was working on a new and fairer school per pupil revenue financial, finance formula.
That's what I thought she was referring to, so...
But that hasn't hit committee or been proposed this year, so it may, it may be delayed next year. Both parties want an improved formula, but there's some large political constituents, correct me if I'm wrong, that don't want the formula changed because they get more money from this formula, that say, we do. And that's something Brett has talked about a lot, is we don't get the same kind of state contributions that, say, some others closer to Denver get. And part of fixing that was going to be, one, the operational mill levy equalization, which passed, I think, last year or the year before. That's going to raise our mill levies automatically to 27 from 24.5-ish. And then, last year, a mill levy override equalization passed, and that's going to supposed to give us an extra $1.5 million this year and increase in subsequent years. That's why if we raise the mill levy override and get more balance from the state. But that's going to be in budget discussions for us. What happened about, what's going on about the Governor saying we might get another 900 per pupil revenue per student? $900. Have you heard anything about that?
No. He's talked to me about, you know, some additional resources around math. I hear there's something else that the Governor's working on in terms of workforce development, and so that might be additional funding, but I haven't heard anything around $900 per pupil. I'll try to track that down and see if anybody else has. But I do think, I think a lot, I think part of the reason that they're not changing the funding formula or having more robust discussions this year, they have in the past. I know Senator Lundin's been part of all of those. But the reason that they're really not, it, in my opinion, the reason they're not really as focused on changing the formula yet is because they want to see, assuming they move forward with their ballot initiative, if they will get more voter tax-funded support through a ballot initiative than having to actually look at the budget.
All right. They just have to end the negative factor, and we'll get 17 to 20 million dollars more a year, right? Justice District. Also, Senator Lundin was working on SB Senate Bill 23-065, which is what you mentioned, Career Development Success Program, and seems like there's a Democrat and Senator Lundin, who's a Republican, signed off in the Senate, but no one on the House at this time, and that's concerning changes to the Career Development Success Program. So, if there's no further questions, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate, you know, coming right from, you know, someone who's on the Education Committee and in the House's mouth, you know, what we should know about and keep track of. Thank you so much.
Thank you for this opportunity, and let's set more of these up whenever you need it. If you guys can accommodate the Zoom, it's easier for me because I drive back and forth to Denver every day, so it's definitely easier.
We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Anytime. Okay, take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Lynette, do you? Okay, good. So, all right. And just so everyone understands, we do have a lobbyist, Amy Atwood, that prepared that Legislative Update spreadsheet, and she can answer through the administration any questions on legislative matters coming up. If you have questions for senators or Congresswomen, make sure you include her and, you know, on that correspondence so she can track what's important to the district, okay? She's our paid lobbyist. She represents District 49, others probably through her lobbyist business, but she looks after our best interests. Thank you. Ron, 6.1, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprems, Director of Finance. Give you a little background of what typically happens as we start the new budget season. We, you know, we just got done doing the amended budget in January, so February is typically the time when we start to refresh or get prepared to start the budget for the next school year. And when I say get prepared, typically what it is, is it's taking all of our spreadsheets. We've got, I can't even count how many we have, but preparing them, flipping them from the '22, '23 school year to now get '23, '24 data. And so, this was one of the things that we, that I worked on to flip over, and so there's some very squishy data in here, but it's at least something I want you to start seeing and start understanding as we look at this moving forward into this budget cycle on what to do, on what our decisions need to be. And so, in this, in this model, I want you to focus on the yellow, yellow areas, that's why they're highlighted. I say it's a squishy number because, again, our, this is general fund only. This isn't talking about the other funds that we have. This is just general fund. This was my estimation on student growth, so this is not, this doesn't have any input from any zone leaders, any principals, anything like that yet. We typically don't have that until March, where we will lock down those numbers. So, again, I just put in a flat 1% growth across each zone to, again, just get the ball rolling. So, you can see in this yellow area here, student count increased 1%. That's a calculated amount, and you can see actually what 1% means at each, at each zone. Up at the top right box there, you can see a 1% increase at the Falcon Zone, be 40, and that's pretty much across the board, except for the Iconix Zone, which would be 11. Then, the other squishy number, again, is our per pupil rate. You just heard the last presenter talk about the long bill. That's one of those things. the long bill. That's one of those things that I watch pretty intently because there's information about, in there about how much money is going to be funded to the School Finance Act and will let me know what that P P, PPR increase is going to be. So I do have early indication on what that could be, and that's called the Governor's Proposal. Governor's Proposal comes out in December. You know, he proposes an amount and it has to go through finance committees and legislature. It never really usually comes to fruition, but it is, it is something to go on at least. And so I think it was, their, his proposal was about a nine percent increase. And again, just to get the ball rolling, I decided to back off on that just a little bit and said, let's go with the eight percent increase. So you can see, again, these are my estimations. This isn't set in stone. Again, I want you to just get familiar with the model. So again, I'm going to come down to this yellow area down here because this is what's going to be important for us as we make decisions going into the next budget cycle, is how much money, new money, do we have as a district? And where are our priorities on how to use that? And so you can see, I don't like, I have this up at the top here. It says new net money to the operated portfolio. That probably should be gross, new, new money to the, to the operated portfolio. Because there are some things that we need to, we typically increase every year. And again, this is up to, up to debate and decision on how we want to go forward. But some of those things are like our capital project needs. You know, every year, we have Fund Fifteen. That is our capital project. This, this is, you know, our, our facilities folks does a walk of the district and they, they decide, they find out, you know, what needs to be fixed and what needs to be done as a district every year. And they have a priority system that, that, that labels these things as one, two, or one, two, three, or four. I can't remember what it is. Typically, we only have enough to fund the priority one things. And sometimes we can't even fund every priority one on that list. And so again, every year I try to increase a little bit. Last year, we had five million in that, in that bucket. I'm, I'm suggesting, again, this is just me talking right now, but I'm suggesting five hundred K go back or more go into that fund. Insurance, we had a large insurance increase last year. I'm recommending we go up even higher, another fifty thousand in that. This is a formulaic adjustment. This is for preschool. There is a lot of flux right now of what preschool is going to look like next year. I'm not even sure how I know how we're going to budget that yet. So I have a lot of meetings with the preschool department here with the district. So getting down to the bottom number here. So net new money to the district, after all these have been subtracted out, it's about ten-point-one million dollars. So then for me, I just throw formulas against that to kind of break this down into different buckets on how we want to look and use this money. So this new money is made up by two, two variables here, rate variance and volume variance. Increase in students means we get more money due to more students. An increase in rate means we get more money due to increase in rate. Typically, and not always, again, in my world, it's all formulaic. Typically, you would use a rate increase to increase current costs. So if we had zero growth in the district and we had a rate increase, we would be able to use that rate increase to increase salaries, increase benefits maybe, increase utility budgets as we see utility bills go up, increase the fuel budget, because we see fuel budgets go up. Pretty much everything right now is because everything is subject to inflation. So we would use that rate money to increase those budgets. Volume, on the other hand, typically, again, we would use, that means we're growing bigger as a district, we would want to potentially hire more people in the district. And so we would use volume for new personnel or new benefits or new programs or new whatever. Again, completely formulaic at this point. Those are squishy numbers, but meaning it can move back and forth depending on what we want to do as a district. But where I start initially is I break out how our current personnel and non-personnel expenses look. Right now, we've got eighty-two percent in personnel and eighteen percent of our budget is in non-personnel, or we call it implementation costs. If we want to keep that same, that same percent, we would want to break our new money up into that same percentage. So having said that, our net new money of ten-point-one right here would be eight-point-two going to personnel costs and one-point-eight going to implementation costs. That would keep that eighty-two, eighteen split into next year. Once I get those, those numbers, again, formulaic, no, no decisions made behind it, I want to find out now of that personnel cost, how much is rate driven and how much is volume driven? So that's what this yellow square is over here. So you can see of that eight-point-two million, seven-point-two is due to rate and nine-hundred-and-ninety-three K is due to volume variance. And then down here with the implementation cost, one-point-six to rate and two-hundred-and-twenty-one to volume or, yeah, to volume variance. So this is, this becomes important. Once we get these numbers, the actual numbers of our known student growth, or I shouldn't say known, our expected or guessed student growth that we all as a district agree to, and then the PPR from the state that comes in, get a better idea of if it's really going to be eight percent or if it's going to be higher or lower than that, then these numbers become a little more solid. Now, even though they're solid formula-wise, we, we could decide. So in this case here, you know, we might say, we might say we only need two-hundred K or three-hundred K of new, new employees next year, meaning we could move four-hundred K from this volume area over to the rate area. Okay? Or the same thing down here with the, with the implementation costs. We might decide that we only really need a million to, to cover increases to, that we're seeing due to inflation in there. And we could move six-hundred up there. So again, this is just, gets us started with that discussion. And that's kind of where I want to lead you, leave you today because I will be showing this, this same two sheets numerous times as we get closer and closer to deciding what that final picture is going to look like. Any questions on this presentation?
I'm actually going to recognize myself. Okay. Operationally speaking, Board, this is where we make the difference. We've already approved the budget for this year, so any complaint on expenditures of this year are well past their prime. So my questions tend to be, what are our capital expenses? Because you said that eighteen percent, right, is going to?
So, so currently, we have five million in our Fund Fifteen. That's our capital, our capital budget.
Okay.
Okay.
And didn't we just spend sixty million dollars of the COP to upgrade everything? So we shouldn't really have a lot of upgrades?
Apples and oranges.
Okay.
So you're talking about C O P monies of MLO.
But that had to be.
These are general fund dollars that we allocate to capital improvement.
Are there mill levy override funds allocated? This, this, that's totally different.
Yeah, this is, all this presentation I did today is just general fund.
Okay. So, okay, I just wanted to make that, I just want to get that clarification. Director DeVola?
Yes, you had mentioned that, let me get back over to that slide, sorry. Eighty-two percent would be for the personnel costs?
That's how our current budget looks today.
Okay.
Eighty-two percent is personnel cost. That includes base pay, salary, and then our base pay, benefits, and then there's other pay, which is like subs and overtime, extra time, stuff like that.
So about how much of a rate increase would that be for personnel? Is it on there? Is that the seven?
So, so again, once it's decided on, this is all formulaic. So this is, no decision has been made. What this would be saying to me is we have about seven-point-two million available for rate increases.
Out of just the general fund?
Out of just the general fund.
Because the mill levy override, which is at eighteen-point-five percent, has a caveat of increasing pay somewhere for teachers.
Right.
Okay. Sorry about that.
So we don't really have like a breakdown of about what percent increase potentially we could see?
I wouldn't, I would be, I would, I wouldn't be smart.
Okay.
Talking about that this early.
Gotcha.
With not, especially with both those numbers unknown to us.
Okay.
I don't want to throw a number out there that's unknown.
This looks good, though, for potentially having some increase for pay for teachers.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree, yeah. That looks, this is, would be nice if the eight percent holds too.
Director Lou?
I have a question. You can answer it later if you want. Mr. Hiltz says in January, that's going to be, because a lot of questions are being asked by both constituents and teachers, actually, as far back as the town, the town hall. The sixth column in the paycheck checkbook on the D forty-nine website where it shows monies being spent on the sixth column that's gone missing for a while. I was told it's going to be available again in January, so we stop getting all these choruses. People can just look. Is that going to be up anytime soon? Because we're not looking in February.
Yeah, I think it went up. I think it's up there. Yeah. I believe.
Any further questions before I move on? Director Thompson?
You kind of covered this when you said the preschool funds would be squishy.
But you were right, because I have no, you know, it's going to a universal pre-K. I, it's, there's a lot of unknown that's still out, out there right now. So I have no idea what's going to happen to our budget.
That was my concern because the state is good at mandating something but not fully funding it. And so as we get further along, when we find out what the state mandates are versus how much money we need or space we need, I just really appreciate you even putting in squishy numbers just so we can kind of get a direction forward till we know how we're going to implement.
Right, just so you can start seeing the four, again, the four different buckets there on what, and even, even when we get harder numbers in there, we can still move funds back and forth. We just have to realize that what we're doing when we do that. That means we have less money somewhere else.
Director Van Weer?
I have a question and a comment. First of all, comment-wise, I think that it, that's wonderful that there will be more money available to teachers, but I would like to point out that that's the same money that all the surrounding districts are going to get as well. So this is not going to help our competitive situation. This will just keep us from going backwards anymore than we have to. Secondly, though, the budget this past year, the Transportation Department had recommended to recoup some of their increased costs with transport, higher transportation fees that the Board decided not to do. Are, is that built into this or is that, are we too early for all that stuff yet?
Well, I, to tell you the truth, I do need to do some, look, I need to look at how that's affecting our current budget right now because the general fund will have to subsidize, subsidize our, your transportation fund. And I'll get, I need to get a better idea of where that's at. And so, yeah, if, if that's the case, then typically what we would need is to use some of that one-point-six million there to, to increase that subsidy.
Yeah, for the last several years, I've asked the budget to focus on students and staff. So as this moves forward, typically what Ron does is he explains different funds and then ties them into how they're related. And so the Board is going to have a chance to, when we look at the action plans, to see how the budget is focused on those strategic objectives and how it is focused on teacher pay. So we will be able to say, how about taking money from here and spending it there? Okay? I personally prefer, set the amount that new teacher should be making as a base salary, whether it's fifty-seven thousand, fifty thousand, forty-eight thousand, whatever that number is. How are we going to, and then how are we going to achieve that? And then how are we going to, you know, that will help with retention and hiring. And then how do we focus on people? I prefer to see, and I, I tell this to Mr. Hiltz, Zone Leaders and Principals, all of the time, where are you spending money that you don't have to? And where do you need to place money that you have to? So we're going to have to make some tough decisions on this budget, and this is to the whole Board, to see where we can take from Peter to pay Paul. Okay? We're not talking a hundred thousand dollars. We're talking more than that. So, you know, maybe we go eighty-four percent on salary and sixteen percent on running the district buildings and stuff like that. We're going to have to see what it is that we need to pay for and what it is that we want to pay for. And I agree with Rick that, you know, there's, there's not enough money out there. Denver's not going to supply us with money and DC is going to take more money. Okay? So the fight isn't here. The fight is in Denver and Washington DC. And quite frankly, El Paso County kind of blew it this last election where we did not put enough representatives into the House in Denver. And so if you want to make a difference, go to those committee meetings where they talk about bills and be courteous but direct and make sure your voices are known because we don't change a lot of these laws here, especially the funding stuff. Ron, I'll have further questions for you at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Educate, Mr. Miller? You have something you wanted to discuss based on what was asked for at the Annual Planning Summit? So let's go ahead and cover that now, since I should have done it an hour ago.
All right. What you're referring to, John, is a report that we put together, that we conducted an investigation after a meeting on November the tenth. Rick Van Weeran introduced a resolution. It was a two-part resolution. Part of it was a, an action related to Director Lou. The other part was to initiate an investigation. We maintained a lot of, we maintained the integrity of this, the confidentiality of this, and, and it's been proceeded through. The nine specific allegations were investigated. There's massive amounts of documentation behind this. And so then.
Point of order.
It was intended to be a, a presentation just for the Board. However, on February eleventh at the offsite, Director Lou.
This is not on the agenda.
Requested to release the report. And so with consensus with the rest of the Board, the Board is in effect waived its attorney-client privilege regarding this report. So I am now going to go ahead and provide it to David Nancaro's office.
We can't do something that's not on the agenda.
And anyone in the public will be able to access.
That is not following.
The report.
Thank you.
And so that's where we stand.
Thank you. Now we're on to.
You cannot ignore her point of order.
Now we're on to Education Technology Annual Report.
I want that made in the notes, please.
It's already in the notes. It's on video. Okay? So this is something that Director, this is something that Director Lou asked for.
Point of order was ignored.
So instead of waiting for other business.
You cannot bully, John. John Graham, you cannot bully your way through this. For the record, please.
Ivy, you can't lie your way through this. You can't deceive your way through this.
Point of order.
Okay, but Mr. Miller has to go. Okay, but Mr. Miller has to go, so I could not wait until other business. But since you asked for this, you got it. Thank you. Now we're on to Education Technology Annual Report. Please.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Riggs and I'm the Education Technology Specialist for Instruction. I'm here with Brent Buena, the Education Technology Specialist for Assessment. Um, we're going to give you our annual report on the state of education technology in the district. Um, these are the areas that we feel like our work best addresses the district's mission. And I want to start tonight by talking to you guys about, um, student online safety. Um, there are hyperlinks in the, um, slide deck that you have, and I just noticed that the bread trail is incorrect, so.
Excuse me? Ladies, when the purple shirts put up Ivy, Lou resign signs, I told them to put them down. You're allowed to, yes, I did. And I did it twice. So if you want to pick up the signs, uh, you need to put them down. Thumbs up and thumbs down signs, I don't care about. But if you want to do those signs, that is out of order for the meeting and has been out of order when I called the purple shirts out of order. And since I hear from you people a lot about being consistent, I'm going to be consistent where they're not allowed to pick up resign signs and neither are you. Uh, you don't like it, you can be asked to leave, or you can follow the rules of decorum. Thank you.
Uh, the bread trail should be D forty-nine dot org. Then you're going to go over to transparency. Um, scroll down to student data privacy. The first page that you'll come to is what you see on the left.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to do this to you. At this time, the board is going to go into recess for five minutes, security. We have people holding up the signs that they were told not to hold up, as other people have been told not to hold up. The board is going to recess, depart the room, so that, uh, we can follow our procedures. And you will be again asked to, uh, put the signs down, as other people have. And if you don't, you're going to be asked to leave. If not, we're going to call the police and have you removed. You have to follow the order of decorum. Thank you.
And you have to follow the order.
Rick, we're taking a recess. And I am so sorry for the interruption, but we have to maintain decorum in order, even if some people don't want to. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, so we're talking about online safety for our students. Um, the page that you see on the left is the federal and state laws. SD TSA is the Colorado state law for student data privacy. Colorado was one of the first states after California to pass a state-level student data privacy law. And in many instances, it is more stringent than the federal laws, so it supersedes those. Um, FERPA and CAPA have a hyperlink to a one-to-two-minute overview video if you want to get a high overview of those. I've actually linked the Colorado law in there. There's not a video, um, but I can assure you, if you have sleep, um, sleeping problems, a little time in that, um, legislation could give you some cure. Um, on the left-hand side of that page, you're going to see approved software. That's going to take you to the page that you see in the picture on the right-hand side. We use a company called Learn Platform to help organize our online products that have been through our Education Technology Request Process, um, for vetting. Uh, and you can very easily see here the, the icon for the product, the name of the product, its approval status for how it can be used with students or not, as well as its, um, privacy status. We do have a process by which our staff can request new products. We look at, um, compliance with federal and state student data privacy laws. As a district, we require a student, uh, data protection addendum be signed by the company um, to ensure that our students are, and their data is safe. We look at technical requirements. We look at data management, who's going to be creating the accounts um, in, within the products, as well as who's going to be maintaining those. And then we look at educational relevance. So I like to use the analogy for educational relevance of a healthy, well-balanced meal versus junk food. So a healthy, well-balanced online product is going to be something that supports the approved curriculum that the zone or the building has set in place. And it is a creation-based product, so students are actively involved in creating something using those online products. The junk food would be more of a skill and drill, um, more consumption, where students are consuming information rather than creating. And they can supplant, or sometimes they can contradict the curriculum that's been adopted. The second area I want to talk to you about is our filtering and monitoring. So we filter the internet, um, for students and we also monitor their Google, looking for instances of grief, self-harm and bullying. Currently, we're using two separate products. We use Securely for filtering and, um, Bark Plus for monitoring. We're going to be piloting this spring, um, a couple of different products. We've asked them to, um, offer us filtering and monitoring through one company, as well as an ad blocker. So when students are searching, um, online for a research project, the ads are going to be blacked out. They won't be able to see those. And then something that our teachers have really been requesting is classroom device management for Chromebooks. So we're asking for all of those in a nice box with a bow that would fit within our, um, budget as well. So it's a big ask. We've had those initial demos this week with, um, principals at the three middle schools who will be, um, involved in that pilot. And I'm going to turn it over to Brent.
And another thing we've been working on this year is our integration of our online systems. Um, a lot of that is having servers talk to servers, so that way you don't have to do the work once. Uh, this past summer, we had our Google audit and they basically told us that our structure was a mess. So Melissa and I, we're the Google administrators for our district. We were cleaning up the structure to make sure everything is working really well, making sure things are talking to each other. Uh, one integration I want to highlight is our Power School, which is our student information system, is now talking to Schoology, which is our learning management system. So in the past, teachers would have to create, uh, classes and rosters, but now that's being pulled from Power School, saving teachers' time every quarter and every semester from creating those, uh, classes and rosters. Uh, another project is our, we're getting ready for the CMAS testing. Uh, we've had a few hiccups with the snow days, but we're back on track with the device preparation and the network infrastructure audits. And we're getting support from Sentinel as well on that. And then I mentioned it earlier, but Schoology is our learning management system that we use for teachers and students. But I just want to highlight, as a parent, you also have access and create an account to see what your child's curriculum is, assigned, um, courses, assignments, and you can see and get access to what discussions they may be having in class. So when my son was K through fourth in D forty-nine, I did appreciate having that access to see what was being taught to him in the classrooms. Just want to make sure that our D forty-nine parents know you do have that available to you with Schoology.
And then one of the other big pieces that we're involved with is helping to, um, offer professional development for our staff. So included with, um, online self-paced courses through Schoology that we offer fall and spring semester, as well as throughout the summer, um, we are excited to offer these three, um, in-person professional events. Colorado Connect has been rebranded this year. It used to be our Schoology Now. Um, and that's a full-day conference we offer in October over fall break. It's a great chance for us to spotlight our, um, D forty-nine teachers, our Schoology ambassadors, as they run the breakout sessions, um, during that event. For the first time ever, we offered an Apple Education event that happened in January. Um, it was an evening event. We partnered with Apple. They sent us some education specialists who were able to run sessions on MacBook tips and tricks, iPad tips and tricks, and then built-in accessibility features that are offered for both of those. And we will be, um, working, we're actually just started working on our Google Summit. That's going to be offered in May on our Professional Pro Day. It'll be a full-day event and we're going to be working with Google to bring, um, some great sessions to help support our staff. All three of these, we open up to the entire state of Colorado, so it's a great chance to show off District Forty-nine. Um, I love to have it at Sand Creek High School in their blended learning spaces, because that's a big woo for people. Um, but it, it helps bring out, uh, great things that we are doing in the district. Um, I do want to say, before I was in this position, I was a classroom teacher for a long time. And one of the things that makes teachers' hearts really happy is to see former students who are, um, succeeding and blossoming. And Amelia, many years ago, was one of my kindergartners at Woodman Hills Elementary School. So it was so wonderful to see her here tonight as a student ambassador. So that is the end of our presentation, but we would, um, love to entertain questions if you have any for us.
Uh, I think I saw Lori's hand up first. Uh, Director Thompson? Okay, Director Van Weeran?
Thank you. Uh, so one question I have, and I asked the Falcon Zone folks about this a little bit at the, uh, NCDC conference, but, um, when, when you reorganize the servers and all that stuff, is, are, are all the lesson plans for Empower FZ kind of, I, I, I just worry about all this content that's being created.
That's floating around?
Yeah, and I, I just, I, I want to make.
It's actually safer in, in Google and in Schoology in the cloud than it ever was. I was telling Brent a horrific story about, um, years ago when I was working on my master's degree and I had my thesis and I was working on a floppy disk, and the floppy disk crashed. And it was the first time I had ever not handwritten anything out. So all of that stuff, um, within our Google Drive, and we're really working in that cleanup that Brent talked about. Um, we're cleaning up our shared drives, trying to make sure that our staff know if, if it's something that your team needs, it should be in a shared drive, because if you leave the district, your individual drive will be, um, removed. But anything that you have in a shared drive will stay long after you're gone. So yes, we want to make sure that they're well-educated, so that they don't lose important work.
And we've had frantic calls of teachers accidentally deleting, and we've been able to recover that.
Yeah, within twenty-five days, Google will let you recover pretty much anything.
Backups, gotta love it. Director Thompson?
You know, I noticed in your presentation, you'd mentioned different filters that are available and things that you look for. How does that interact with other programs specifically, um, when it comes to the passport access to the Pike's Peak Library District? Does, you know, I, I don't know if there's an effective way to do this, and I've been talking to the incoming president of the PPLD about how do we protect kids, because kids will gravitate towards what's, what is, what they're not supposed to be reading. Um, and, and to be fair, like I said, there, most of their phones have more access than even the library district. But I wanted to know, how do our filters work with outside programs coming in like the library district passport?
Yeah, so our web filters are, are specifically just to the web content and traffic for our network. So for third-party apps like that, it wouldn't necessarily, uh, monitor or filter out.
But it is, um, I do meet with librarians and our library paras, and so that is a topic of concern that they have for, um, like, uh, different pieces that Pike's Peak Library District offers. It, it locks them down at one point where they can only get to certain pieces, but then they can go back to the main page of Pike's Peak Library District, and then they can search things that they probably shouldn't be searching. So it is a concern with our librarians and our library paras, um, something that we're working to try to find a solution for.
Director Lou?
A couple, a couple of questions. When you say student data privacy, what specifically are we talking about? What is considered student data?
So, um, in, in the law, uh, what student data is, any time that a student is using their name and anything that identifies them. So for example, our students, their, um, Google, uh, addresses, email addresses are their student ID numbers. So when their student ID number and their name are used in conjunction to log into something, that data is anything that the platform or the product is going to collect. So for example, we have products that, um, hold on to our students' SAT scores and their, um, beginning, middle and end of year scores. That would be considered data. Anything that's going to be, anything that is connecting them, uh, with information. And the big problem, I have a lot of, a lot of times when I meet with, um, staff, especially like kindergarten teachers, okay, well, what are they going to do with information for a kindergartner? Well, now they have a name. So, um, a few years down the line, I could pretend to be a ten-year-old and I could be looked at that name up on social media and try to, um, get them to come meet me at the park, or things like that. So we want to make sure, um, that our students are, are well-protected in that area. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And so, um, uh, SAT scores, the, the state testing, is that part of the student data?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, what about survey results? Is that part of the student data?
Um, if their name or their email address or their student number is connected to it, then yes, that would be considered student data.
And this is strictly protected by the law, where no outside, um, agencies can access it?
Right. Um, the big thing about student data privacy, federal and state laws, is that, um, educational companies should not be selling any information. And if there is a data breach, then, um, that's why we require a data protection addendum. The privacy policy and the terms of use that you see at the bottom of a webpage, that only protects the company. It in no way protects our district or our students. So that's why we ask for that data protection addendum. It is a signed legal document, um, that puts all of the ownership on the safety of our students and their data with the company. So if something should happen and there was a data breach, then we would, um, and we faced fines, the company would have to cover those fines.
And if you go to page three, which we're on, you click on one of the two pictures, it'll take you to our webpage, addressing student privacy and approved software. So, uh, Director DeVolo?
I, I wasn't finished.
Your time expired. Director DeVolo?
Point of order, there's no time limit to discussions, but you keep blowing that.
With the student data, and being able to access different webpages, et cetera, just, I know in certain zones, they're not allowed to even be on YouTube at all.
We block it as a district.
We block it as a district?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
YouTube? For students, not for staff.
Okay. I know that there has been some concern about having to transform their videos or their lessons through a different app.
Yes.
In order for students to access, what is that called?
It's called My VR Spot.
That's what I wanted to...
Yep.
My VR?
So My VR Spot is a company where our teachers have accounts, and they can take the URL from a YouTube video and put it into there. They take that link and share the link with students. So now all of a sudden, students only have access to the video. They don't have those breadcrumbs on the side. They don't have access to any of the comments. It's only the video.
With the ad?
With, with no, with no ads?
With no ads. Okay. How easy is that to, for accessibility for teachers?
You're just simply copying a URL and placing it into My VR Spot, and then you're taking a copy of the My VR Spot URL and uploading it to Schoology or Google Classroom. So, you know, thirty, forty-five seconds.
Okay, cool.
It's pretty, pretty quick.
Is there, I know some teachers do like to show YouTube videos in their class through their login information. Is there any filter for the teacher's content at all? Or is that completely unfiltered? Because I know it's kind of dangerous for an ad to pop up right in the middle.
Absolutely. And we, we, you know, we try to educate, make sure that you preview anything that you're showing, make sure that it's ready to go, that it doesn't have that short ad. But teachers also are filtered and monitored through our monitoring and filtering system. So they're not able to access anything that's inappropriate.
Second round, Rick Van Weeran? Director Thompson? Director Lou?
Quick question about Google. I mean, it's, it's, for the rest of us outside this district, Google is basically a tracker. They do track everything you do, you know, even when you're picking your nose or something. I'm kidding. But, so within, within the district, the kids' activities, you're tracking them to make sure they're not doing anything, right?
Yes.
But when, you're not allowing Google to track the kids. That is a total wall there, right?
Right. Google has a, a separate piece that is specifically for education. And so the, the main pieces of Google Drive, Docs, Sheets, Slides, Sites, that are the core pieces of the Google Apps for Education, don't allow that tracking. That's why we block YouTube. YouTube is owned by Google, but it's a third party. And YouTube has basically said, this is for 18 and older. If you want to get on it and you're under 18, our hands are off. We take no responsibility. And, and when we talk about monitoring at Google, we're looking for instances of grief, self-harm, and bullying. So if something like that pops up, it's going to alert building administration, it's going to alert our security team so that we can act on that and, and make sure that our students are safe.
But Google is not accessing, do they have, are they not accessing that information? Or they have it and they just don't release it anywhere else?
They're, they, no, no, they're not releasing it anywhere. And that's, that is part of the agreement that we have with them as an education entity, which is different from, if you're using Google as, like, my mom of three in Colorado at Google.com is very different than my mlrigs at D49.org.
Do we trust Google? Because isn't it owned by Communist China?
Yeah, we, I, I don't want to talk about that because it makes me want to vomit, so. There's some scary things, for sure. I mean, like you said, Google is, they're one of the biggest advertisers. And so, you know, you, you say to somebody, I might want to take to Italy, and all of a sudden, it's all showing up everywhere. There are some conversations going on around that, but right now, our understanding and what we're moving forward with is that they are protecting our students and they are following all the federal laws.
Director DeVola?
Who has access to the actual student data? Is that just parents and that specific teacher? Or the teacher and the principals, admin? Like, where does the access end, I guess you could say? Like, test data, their scores?
Well, so for the individual product, they're going to hold that data within the company of that product. And, and we are saying that you're not allowed to sell it and, and it should be secure. The people that have access to it would be able, anybody who has access to that student's account. So for example, Schoology, if I have a parent account, I'm able to access my student's part of Schoology. As the teacher, I'm able to access all of the students in my class's information. Does that answer your question?
Up to the principal? Does like the principal have the access to all of the students' data? Or is that just for the teacher?
I think it would depend on the principal.
Yeah, the principal would have access to all the students in their building.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Sure.
Okay. And I give back four minutes because I didn't speak at all, but thank you so much for providing this pertinent information.
Thank you.
And I will move on to the Dean of Academic Advisement.
Good evening. Thank you all for having me here this evening. Tonight, I am asking us to discuss for a further recommendation for an action item for approval for a new job description. This dean, it's called Dean of Academic Advisement. So when we were coming up with this as a team at Sand Creek, this is something that exists informally within many counseling teams across the country. And it's informal in nature. There are some school districts who have created a formal job description for this, and they call it anything from a scheduler. In some school districts, they have something called a data processor where they're working more on larger systems. But what we're looking to do is provide more formal support within our counseling team so we can be intentional about our work. Right now, counselors have a number of job duties that are assigned to them. And some of those job duties are a little bit more analytical and left-brained in nature, which includes academic advisement. And there are some other job duties that are a little bit more right-brained in nature, which is when they're working with individual students one-on-one and providing them support. And what my experience has been, and what we see sometimes with counselors, is that they're pulled in lots of different directions. And we're seeing that also in our application pools where we do not have a great number of applicants to counselors and to counseling positions. And so it's important that we provide some more formalized supports for them in freeing up their time so that they can be more intentional with it. And so what I'm proposing to you all this evening is that we have an existing budget already for counseling, and we want to provide time, space, and a job for someone with either a teaching license or a counseling license, but for them to have academic advisement as their primary responsibility. When we think about something that's what we have done through college and career advisement, but through ESAR funding, that sunsets. That's not sustainable over time. And so we're going to have to absorb that when those positions sunset, and we need to be prepared for that. And so this is part of our efforts in doing that as well. And so now I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions that you might have.
Anybody with questions? Director DeVola?
This, we have people that are already kind of doing this job description currently, so it would be just changing their, their current job description? Or is this adding another position?
This wouldn't be adding it. It would be formalizing it so that what exists right now informally will have a system to support it and sustain it over time. So it's not anything additional in the budget. It's just reallocating it.
So if we approve that, then someone could overnight have a different title? Is that kind of what my understanding?
No. Right now, for example, at Sand Creek, we have two open counseling positions. We've had these open for, one of them has been open almost the entire school year. And the other one has been open for about a month or so, for a few weeks now. But what we're seeing is that our job pool is not changing. And so we need to create something that will help provide support so our students are served, so our staff have the tools that they need to do their job, but it may not be within the current realm of licensure of what they have.
They, this is with the intent of drawing more applicants?
That's part of it, yes.
Got it.
Thank you. Director Lou?
How many counselors do you have now, slotted? How many counselors do you have at Sand Creek that's in, in your organizational chart?
So we have four total positions at Sand Creek. And we have the Dean of Student Success, who oversees more of the mastery side, as well as our online and distance learning.
So you're, you're short two of the four?
Correct.
Yeah. Do, can you explain why the counselor shortage? Because I know Falcon had none for quite a while.
Yes. Well, I, we're not seeing that enough applicants are coming out there. Just my own personal experience, what I have seen, is that many counselors get into that profession because they love to work with students and mentor and help mold them and guide them, and to help them prepare for their futures and just being healthy, you know? And so sometimes, the left-brain analytical systems part of guidance counseling is difficult. And it can be time-consuming in some ways, and then they're not able to do both effectively.
So, so now the emphasis is on the right-brain part, which is what teachers, I mean counselors love?
Yes. So now the counselors who we have will be able to focus on the right-brain part. And then on this side, with this job description, they'll be able to focus more on the systems' analytical left-brain part.
So I, I'm really glad to hear that you're focusing on that because the right-brain part of the counselor makes huge differences in many students.
Yes.
Who don't get that counseling from the, from the family.
Mm-hmm.
So, and one of those. So, so yeah, I, I'm really glad you're focusing on that, and that's just great insight on your part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Thompson, anything?
I just wanted to make a comment more than anything else when I was reading over the job description, which does seem highly focused, which I appreciate and I think will really benefit our students. The physical demands, what kind of crawling is involved with this position?
Good question. We just took this from the form of what we had that was pre-existing within our district.
Because once you're crawling, you have to stand up again, and that's the harder part as you get older, yeah?
I agree.
Van Weeran?
I appreciate you thinking outside the box and, you know, this, I think, I think stuff like this is, we're going to have to, as a district, we're going to end up having to see more of it where we're widening the pool to, to make it work. And I, I just appreciate you being as proactive and insightful to, to come up with it, so.
Thank you. I have a great team that, that helps us come up with all of this. They've taken the lead on this. We're proud of them.
Okay, I'll turn back the remainder of my time, so you guys all wear the shirt. And I will say thank you. And now we are consensus to move this forward at the next regular meeting?
Yes.
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 Yes. Unanimous? And now we're on to a 6.5, Monthly Chief Executive Officer Report.
Okay, first thing I want to do is celebrate some of our students. I mean, that's what we're here for. It happens all to be in Falcon Zone, so nobody get mad, but we had a fantastic girls' basketball victory, varsity 5A in the playoffs for our Falcon Girls team. They had to battle into overtime, and they won it 50 to 42, so they're moving on. So, celebrate to the thousands here, and those out who will listen to it tomorrow, please make sure you make that recognition. We also have a major milestone in the Falcon Zone. Giovanni Major, he won state. He's the first state champion in more than 30 years from Falcon High School. Wrestling, wrestling. So I think we got, we got to pause and make sure that we celebrate those students and understand right now, we're in one phase of state championship season. And once those are all over, I'm sure that when Peter gets back, he'll talk about more champions they have among us in our district, and there will be more. And then a new season starts, and then we'll, I think track is starting now, so we'll have more to celebrate in May when we have state champions over there. This adds to our girls' championship and cheerleading over at Vista Ridge, so we're doing great things. And I like to think about, you know, gardener and multiple intelligencies and things like that. People focus on, you know, general intelligence quotient, but kinesthetic, being able to do these things is amazing. As a former wrestler myself, it's the toughest three minutes in the world to be able to use your entire body to get there. I couldn't do it right now, and I got artificial pieces put on me recently, so we're good. The other thing I want to do is, we haven't had an operations report in a long time. That's what I do now, and I just want to say that we have all the consideration, especially in light of what Ron's friends talked about in terms of the budget. One of the things I want the board to think about as well is that we have a lot of deferred maintenance. And each year when the budget comes out, we have a set piece, and usually, and I think I got to talk about this with Jamie Lynn at the DAC. We have about $5 million a year that we use. Our needs are probably more like $45 million a year, and I hope that out of some of the budget, we hope to get more out of that too. Because when you think about the holistic of educating the child, we got to have buildings that are, have the right temperature, we got to have buildings that not are overrun by, you know, grass. And in this environment right now, we got to be able to have somebody to shovel the snow away from the school, to be able to get the students in. So always be mindful that, we talk about teachers a lot, and teachers are great. Like I said, my mom's a teacher, my wife's a teacher. I think teachers are the best people in the world. But we always got to think about those things that support the teachers in doing their jobs. And got some great people will be out there tomorrow morning at 4:00 AM, coming from the grounds yard with our porta potty and no running water, but you know what? They're going to do a fantastic job clearing everything out. While we were going on this meeting, we were able to call a two-hour delay. So when you see us over here doing these things, we're, we're communicating with each other. We got to make sure we talk to Dave Nancarroll to get the message out. I'm communicating with Peter, I'm communicating with Jack. Because safety matters, and we got to make it happen. And we do it every day in District 49. So when you see all the moving parts on the surface, understand that the legs of the duck are kicking wildly. And some of that is my operations folks, making sure meals get on tables, buses get out there, we fix the buildings, we build new buildings. So with that, understanding our time, I want to say, that's where I'd like to end. Thank you.
Okay, and Kyle, questions for him?
Sir.
Do you have questions for, no one has questions?
When does the baseball season start?
Baseball starts, I'm concurrent with track, so I think it's the, right now is the 22nd, so I believe next week, baseball should be trying out.
Yeah.
I'm a big baseball fan, too, so.
What about softball? Let's not be sexist.
Yes, softball is getting underway too. My daughter was a former coach at Falcon High School for softball for several years, and took them to the playoffs one of the years that she was coaching. So I'm, got a big card for Falcon softball, but all softball in the district.
Thank you. So if you look at information items, the Board Subcommittee Minutes for CAC, CLAC, and DAC are in there? And for other business? If, this is where Brad Miller was supposed to speak, so I have to apologize to Director DeVola, who was correct with her point of order, but I went out of agenda order because he had to leave. So that's what I should have said to you instead of trying to listen to him. So I apologize to you for that.
Thank you.
Okay? And the results of that inspection, of that investigation is there. If you renew your, what do you call it?
Refresh your screens.
Refresh your screens. Any other, other business? Do you have other business? Director DeVola?
I don't remember.
Okay. So at this point, we're adjourned at...
Are you changing the dates?
No, we already tasked them.
We talked about changing the dates already, but we already tasked them.
Oh, I know what now.
I know that Lori and I have been working on IG-R. Do you want an update on that?
Yeah, can we get an update on that?
Sure. So Lori and I met to discuss the new curriculum, the, not new, the revision to IG-R, which is the curriculum regulation. And we proposed to Peter to add in there some wording in order for input to go, to be run through Central Office with Learning Services. So Learning Services having input on major curriculum changes. And also to have a, a time limit, not time limit, but a, a...
Longer period.
Longer period of time to review curriculum, saying like, 10, it will be open to the public for at least 10 days for curriculum to be, yes, business days for curriculum to be reviewed by the public. And then also presented to the board with pros of, of why they are changing this curriculum, what is the research behind the curriculum, the research validation and the research base.
the research base, and then any potential, what's it called? Any, I haven't written down. Any potential problems that could be brought up. That's not the right word. Weaknesses, that's the word I'm looking for? Thank you. Any potential weaknesses with the curriculum that's presented? Anything you want to add, Lori?
No, you covered it well.
Okay. It's always appropriate that curriculum is reviewed by educators and parents, and that it is age-appropriate. If we should have that word, those words in there, I would appreciate that. And that the curriculum is effective. So I also asked that after curriculum review, if a curriculum is chosen, that there is a memorandum of the record signed by whoever is responsible for approving the curriculum at the school and zone level be provided as part of that presentation to the board.
Would you send me an email with those?
I know I sent it to him. I may not have forwarded it, but I'll try to find it and forward it to you guys. Just that, you know, when another board sits here, they may not know. We reviewed SEL in 2015, 2014. We reviewed this stuff here before I was on the board and once when I was on the board. So it's important to have that captured so that historically, the corporate knowledge is retained. Thank you. And we are reset, we are...